Welcome. Welcome to the April 20, 2023, meeting of the City of Des Moines Plan and Zoning Commission. I will now read the rules and procedures. The Plan and Zoning Commission is generally an advisory body to the City Council. The City Council will hold a public hearing and make the final decision on all matters before the commission, other than site plans and subdivision flats, unless details or conditional approvals thereof are appealed. Please contact the city clerk or Development Services Department staff for details on council hearings. The applicant will be given 10 minutes to present the request. Proponents and then opponents from the public are then allowed to speak in that order, with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. Applicant is then allowed five minutes for a rebuttal. The hearing will then be closed, and the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the item under consideration, and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report, unless an individual present or member of the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. I get a motion from a commissioner to approve the April 6 minutes of our meeting?
I'll move, Abby.
Thank you. All in favor, please raise your right hand. And any abstentions, raise your right hand? Do we do pass now? Okay, pass. I think there were three. Oh, four. Four passes. Okay, I will now read through the consent agenda items. Number one, consideration of a city-initiated zoning ordinance text amendment to Municipal Code Section 134-2.2.9 pertaining to planned unit development legacy districts. Is there anyone in the audience tonight who would like this put on the public hearing? Seeing none, is there anyone on the commission who would like to discuss this on public hearing tonight? Okay, seeing none, that will remain on the consent agenda. Number two, a request from Lisa Wertz and Christopher Wertz for vacation of approximately 283 lineal feet of undeveloped southwest Fourth Street right-of-way to the west and adjacent to the property of 315 Deal Avenue. Is there anyone in the audience tonight who would like to discuss this in the public hearing? Seeing none, is there anyone on the commission who would like this moved to the public hearing? Okay, seeing none, number two will stay on consent. Number three, a request from Eric Redmond for review of a public hearing site plan and for a type-two design alternative for property located at 2915 Rutland Avenue to allow construction of a detached garage with two-foot side yard and rear yard setbacks where a minimum setback distance is five feet. Is there anyone in the audience who would like this heard in the public hearing tonight? Is there anyone?
What's that address?
Oh, the address was 2915 Rutland Avenue? No? Is there anyone on the commission who would like this item discussed in public hearing tonight? Okay, seeing none, item three will remain on the consent agenda. Item number four, a request from David DeBoer for review of a public hearing site plan and for a type-two design alternative for property located at 2741st Place to allow construction of a detached garage with a two-foot side yard and rear yard setbacks where the minimum setbacks distance is five feet. Is there anyone in the audience? Yes, okay. Number four will move to public hearing. Item number five, a request from RM Madden Construction for review of a public hearing site plan and for a type-two design alternative for property located at 2437 East Douglas Avenue to allow for construction of a House A building type with an attached garage overhead door that comprises 42.6% of the front facade width of the house, where the maximum allowable width is 30% of the front facade. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to discuss this item tonight? Yes, okay. That will also be removed to the public hearing. Item number six, a request from RM Madden Construction for review of a public hearing site plan and type-two design alternative for property located at 2445 East Douglas Avenue to allow for construction of a House A building type with an attached garage overhead door that comprises 42.6% of the front facade, where a maximum allowable width is 30% of the front facade. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to discuss this item? Right, number six will also be moved to the public hearing. So the items on the consent agenda tonight are one, two, and three. I get a motion from a commissioner to approve the consent agenda.
This is Carolyn, I approve. I'm getting the motion moved.
Sorry. Thank you. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay, any opposed? Or pass?
Motion carries.
Okay. All right, we will now hear item number four, a request from David DeBoer for property located at 2741st Place to allow construction of a detached garage. Srioshu Chakravarti, forty will present from the staff.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Srioshu Chakravarti, planning staff. The item before you is a residential site plan requesting a type-two design alternative to seek waiver for side yard and rear yard setbacks in N5 Neighborhood District. The setback requirements for this particular district for both side yard and rear yard setback is five feet. The waiver is to allow two feet. So this is the property. It's off of Sheridan Avenue. It's in the Beaverdale neighborhood. I have some pictures here to give you an idea. Here's the property. Looking on the surrounding properties gives you a feel for what the houses are, the character of the neighborhood, the layout, and so on. So this is a site sketch that was submitted by the applicant. So the applicant is seeking to replace the existing detached garage, which you can see over here. The applicant's goal is to use the existing driveway and the concrete slab for the existing garage, and that is essentially why the request is to be able to kind of have the same footprint of the garage, if you will, which leads to the request to be able to have the two feet setback from the two property lines on the rear and the side yard boundaries. So that is the reasoning behind the waiver request. So when staff is reviewing these kind of waiver requests, there's a few different criterias that are looked at in order to review this. So those being, what is the character of the adjacent properties, the surrounding neighborhood? Does that fit? Does that have any adverse impacts on the adjacent neighbors? That kind of thing. And does it fit with the character of the surrounding neighborhood? So in reviewing all of those criteria, staff thinks that this waiver request is something that we can support, and therefore we are recommending that the requested type-two design alternative for the rear and side yard setback be approved. So that is the end of my presentation. We did not receive any comments, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to take them this time.
Does the commission have any questions for Srioshu? Thank you very much. Is the owner or the representative here?
Yes. Dave DeBoer. Really, I'm here to thank staff for their work. We lost a garage in a bad fire, unfortunate. Our new garage with these new dimensions, it is further away from the rear lot line. It is further away from the side lot line. Also, some things we're doing is we're putting some fireproof siding inside the other siding. We are hooking up a smoke detector in the garage because we are separated from it in our house. And so I think what we have is a good solution, and I'm simply here to thank staff for their work. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the commission have any questions for the applicant? Sorry. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
If there are any speakers in support of this request, you may come forward now. Say your name and address when you come up.
Jesse Helmick. I am the one that tried to put the garage back up for him. One thing that he mentioned, he's trying to keep this garage looking like the Beaverdale area. Instead of just putting 12-inch siding on the garage or lap siding, he is actually going the extra mile and putting the 4-inch lap siding that was on the original garage, so it matches the Beaverdale area. So he's trying to do everything to keep it the Beaverdale area, and that's why we'd like to keep it in this location. Because when you start moving the garage further away from, then the garage overpowers the house, it overpowers the neighborhood, so. But that's why we're trying to leave it at this location. Plus, we'd have to get into driveway, like was mentioned, I think there's a telephone pole there that might have to be moved to, so. And then the sidewalk going up to it, we'd have to redo all the sidewalk. The vegetarian, the flowerbed he has there would be all in the fence and everything, so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can you sign in? There's a piece of paper up there. I'm sorry, I forgot to ask the previous speaker to sign in as well. Thank you. Is there anyone in opposition who would like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Or not the public hearing, I'm sorry, just this item. Yes?
Madam Chair, I was struck by the fact that no one, excuse me, no one from the adjacent property residents raised an objection about this. That, to me, is quite telling. They're the people that are going to be directly affected by the new garage, so within that context, I move staff recommendation.
There's no further discussion on that motion, and we can vote on that. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All right, thank you.
Thank you again.
Thanks. All right, item number five, a request from RM Madden Construction for review of a public hearing site plan and type-two design alternative for property located at 2437 East Douglas to allow construction for a House A building type. Nick Tarpey from staff will present.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Nick Tarpey, planning staff. So what we're talking about here tonight, it's a new home, house type A, N1B zoning. The key relief there is the length of the facade that the garage takes up. So within this house type, the maximum that a garage can take up on that front facade is 30%. They're proposing about 42%, so they do need to seek relief for that. So that's the specific design alternative on the docket tonight. So here's an aerial of the site. The parcel, the subject parcel is highlighted here in orange. Something crucial to note is that last year, or last summer, there was a platte survey that divided this land, so before this, if you follow my cursor here, it was all one parcel. So this was one contiguous geo parcel. Last summer, there was a platte survey submitted to do a land subdivision to divide this one parcel into three separate parcels, and they all have different lot widths. So this one is about 65 feet, and then these two are about 59 and a half feet. The minimum lot size in this zoning district is 60 feet. As staff, though, we did approve a type-one design alternative at that time, when the platte survey came in, to allow a lot width of 59 and a half feet. So this existing dwelling here on the far east, it could maintain an eight-foot setback from this new parcel line that was created. And so these two lots, these residual lots, have lot widths of 59 and a half feet. So that might come up later again tonight, I just wanted to point that out for the commission. Here's just some street view imagery. These pictures were taken this week, just to kind of give you an idea of the context. Here is the lot, or the land area where these two new homes would go that we'll be discussing tonight. Here's an up-close view. Here's the site plan. So as you can see, lot width 59 and a half feet, got a seven-foot setback here, 15-foot on this side, pretty general house plan, conformance to all the setbacks that are required. Here's that front elevation, so as you can see, here's that garage, takes up about 42% of that front facade width. And so digging into the staff report here, as staff, we thought about it for a little bit. Generally, we were supportive. It does relatively fit the existing architectural character in the area. There's a lot of homes, there's a lot of dwellings that already have parking in a front yard, so it wasn't really out of character in that regard. And then also, the garage, it's not necessarily just a blank wall garage. It will have some transparency, some glazing, some windows to give it a little bit of detail in that respect. And so for those reasons, staff does support the request. This is the notification area, didn't hear any comments beforehand, but I'll be happy to take any questions.
Any questions from the commission? All right, thank you, Nick. All right. Is the owner a representative here to discuss? Is the applicant here to present?
No.
No? Okay, we will move on to speakers in support of the request. All right, seeing none. Speakers in opposition of the request, may come forward? If you would state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Name's John Severs, reside at 3915 Lay Street in Douglas Acres. Been there 46 years. My question on both number five and number six is how this got moved down to 59 and a half feet in width, when it should have been 60. There's enough ground there to make both of these lots 60-foot, and I understand it was an executive decision to run it through and make them 59 and a half. Why, I don't know. My other question on this is, the way the houses are laid out, I thought the front of the house was supposed to face the street. You know, I mean, all of the other homes in our neighborhood, the fronts of the house face the street. You know, these two structures have a garage, they have an entryway to a hallway and a bedroom facing the street. You know, there's, it's not like the rest of the houses on the whole street, on East Douglas or Lay Street. They're all different. And all this is done with, you know, out of any consideration. I mean, it's been a conversation at our neighborhood meetings for some time, but nobody had any answers. And this is my concern. I mean, this is Douglas Acres, it's been there, it's called Douglas Acres for a long time. It's been that way, we're trying to protect the neighborhood and maintain the neighborhood. There's a lot of other areas that are slack on vacant homes and everything else, but these are our concerns on these two pieces of property. That's it for me.
Okay. Thank you. If you would sign in, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this item tonight?
He put, that's covered what I was going to say.
Okay, so you don't want to speak?
No, I mean, if you would.
Okay. If there is no one else who would like to speak, is, oh, I'm sorry.
And while he's coming up here, I'll just say, staff does have the administrative authority to grant deviations up to 30% of the requirements. So the lot width of 59.5 feet was less than 1%, less than the required 60 feet, so staff did go ahead and grant that administratively last summer. As Nick had mentioned, the lot was divided from one lot into three lots. The easternmost lot was 65 feet, so theoretically, they could have divided it into a 60-foot wide lot, or two 60-foot wide lots, and then a 63, 64-foot wide lot. But then that existing house would have needed a type-one design alternative for the setback, since they needed to provide a seven or eight-foot side yard setback. So by putting the lot line where they did, that allowed the existing house to meet the setback requirements.
And it wasn't the existing homeowner who subdivided the lot?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Dean Brown. I live at 3900 Lay Street in Douglas Acres. Several, quite a few years ago, several years, they wanted to build a house on East 25th, and that house was going to be the seventh house that was placed on that property divided up. Okay? And at that time, we got it, we got that stopped because it was going to be less than the proper footage, front footage. Now, at that time, we got that approved by the city as the integrity of Douglas Acres, the lots we have. I live on the west side, 3900 Lay Street. Our lots are 118 feet by 342.6, which we lost somewhere along the line on the new county records. On the east side of the street, on the east side of the street, them lots was 123 by 326 feet. Okay? So he brought up about, somebody had just the authority to go within so many footage and say, okay, we can build on a 59 and a half-foot lot. All right? So anyway, our city councilman let us down on this deal. Should have cut this, nipped this in the bud whenever they divided that before. And we were told by a guy over here that said, that's a done deal, we can't change that. Now, this here garage door thing doesn't seem like a big deal to people, but you wouldn't let somebody go build a garage and live in it with the garage facing the street. Why do we have to have a door that's going to be, what is that, 30 to 42, 12, 12 and a half percent more than is allowable? Okay? I lived on it, I lived up there 54 years, and I knew when the Greens owned that property and gardened it and stuff. And never had any idea that it was going to be allowed to be divided less than the neighborhood frontage for the rest of our neighborhood. Now, another question I have, over this past few days of this week, they've dumped several loads of clay in there, evidently going to bring the grade up the street to build on. And it's my understanding that to properly put that clay and pack that clay, that they should have taken the grass out of there. In 1976, I built a new house on my property at 3900 Lay Street, and I was told that it could have no deleterious material under that dirt. Now, I'm just wondering, doesn't grass deteriorate? Isn't that a deleterious material? How are they going to buy with this? I mean, this doesn't make sense to me, that somebody come in there and say, well, you can do this, you can do that, we're the board here, we can adjust this by so many percent. No deal, no problem.
I guess, first, I just want to rebut, you said the council member let you down. The council member didn't, I guess, have any say in this, it was approved by staff administratively, and the city ordinance allows staff to deviate up to 30%. And again, a half a foot is less than 1% of a 60-foot wide lot, so staff, we felt it was reasonable to deviate by six inches. And then your other question about the soil coverage, I'm not following what that word...
Deleterious material. Came right out of City Hall down there on, on the armory building down there on First Street.
I'm not familiar with it.
Yeah, well, you know, evidently people's not aware of Douglas Acres getting their large lot, so-called acres. There's not a full acre that we have, but if you do the math, 342.6 times 118, it's 40,000, and not 43,560. But anyway, somebody, you know, allowed that to go wrong there, you know, when they had plenty of room in that other house to take the property and make it right.
Right, I mean, yeah, at the end of the day, though, it was, I think, like I said, on average, the three lots are over 60 feet wide each, and the platte survey that divided that has been approved, so the only course of action at this point would be to file an appeal in district court.
In 1976, I took a scale, had little squares, and each square represented a square foot, and I took it to the city to get my permit. And they tried, at that time down there in City Hall, they tried to get me to build a duplex. Well, I didn't want two people living on my property, me and somebody else. But they wanted me to build a duplex. But why, I don't know, I can only speculate that the tax revenue they could get from two houses instead of one.
Could I ask a question on topic for a quick second? I'm curious, you said deleterious material, which is basically harmful materials. Do you have a reference to the deleterious material item? You're saying that the grass under the clay is deleterious material? Is there an ordinance for that here that we're missing?
I'm going to quote what the guy told me. Anything that, anything that, Eric, that can decay other than dirt, you know? That's what they told me in 1976.
Gotcha, okay.
I don't understand why that changed now. You follow what I'm saying?
I do, I just want to make sure, because I think I agree with Bert that right now the scope of this, that's sort of a, that would be an enforcement thing. If there's an enforcement issue, I'd love to figure out how we can help within the scope of what we have, I'm not sure.
That's an issue that would need to be brought That's an issue that would need to be brought up with the building and permit department and not, and not the planning and zoning commission. That's not something I'm going to purge you over.
Okay, in this, excuse me.
Sorry. If, if you want to do one quick statement again, but you are at, you're, you're over your five minutes. So, if you have something more in relation to the garage that is on
Two, I got two things to say.
Agenda today.
I got two things. One is, that clay they dumped in there's got field drain tile in it. Okay? So, it, maybe that might make it a dump site. I don't know. And the, the last thing is, when I left the house, my wife said that the garage shouldn't be, be on the front of the house. They, people shouldn't be living in the garage. The garage should be behind the house where people live. And I could go into, when I built my house, I had a permit in '73 to build my garage. Had they told me that my side yard consisted where my garage would, would have to be seven feet from the lot line, I would have moved my garage over. Because of that, I could not build my house where I wanted to, because when I got the permit to build the garage in '73, it was only three feet.
Right.
So now I was, now I was out of luck.
Right. I understand.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I took too much time.
If you can sign on the sheet.
But I, I don't think we need to make a bigger garage door just because it's, it's there, you know?
And I will have the inspector go take a look to see if they-
You want me to write my name here?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Is there anyone else in the audience?
I have a question.
Okay. You state your name and address, please.
Don Gable, 3924 Lay. Okay, my question is, if they let the 59 and a half feet slide, how about the other lots in the neighborhood? Are they going to let them do it too? We, we fought for a long time to keep two houses off of these lots.
So, again, that's not the item in front of us tonight. We are not deciding lot lines. That was something that was decided last summer. So, it's not really something we can address tonight. This is something Bert already said would need to be an appeal through the district court. Was there, just out of curiosity, was that on a public hearing?
It was administrative. It was administrative. And the criteria that staff considers is, does the proposed lot width meet the character of the area? So, if you look at the map that's on the screen right now, everything on the south side of East Douglas Avenue is right into that 50 to 60-foot wide width. So, staff did feel that the 59.9, or 59.5-foot widths were compatible with what's there in the immediate vicinity.
There was a house up the street a while back, and he was 59 and a half. And he was going to tear down the house and build another house. And they turned him down. And then the one next to me, it's 118 feet, which is two feet short, and they turned him down. What my question is, are they going to now allow them to do that?
I guess I, I'm not aware of those other instances, but if they would file an application now, we would have to consider it under the current standards.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public item, the public hearing on this. Is there anyone in the commission who has questions or discussion on this?
Yes, I have a question that, since we didn't have the person applying here here, one of the questions should seem to be that I don't think there's any other houses on this street with the front facing garage. Are there, everything else looks like it's all in the back. All the materials we have show up in the back. We have other properties that are the same width. All the garages in the back. I don't understand why we should be both breaking an ordinance and going out of character of the neighborhood when we haven't even heard an argument from the individual to show why that they need this special dispensation.
Yeah. I mean, your options are obviously you could deny the appeal, or you could continue it to the next meeting and give the applicant a chance to come and answer any questions. But when staff was looking at whether or not the proposed houses meets the character, this area really has been developed with a pretty eclectic mix of houses. There's not really one consistent house type in the area. And therefore, we thought, well, it's already a mix. Adding this home design into the mix isn't going to be, it could be compatible. And then we also noted two houses down, I don't know if you can see it, I think it's lot 2429, that garage isn't necessarily attached to the house, the lot to the west, but it does have a garage door facing the street. So, there is that, we could point to character on that.
This seems percentage-wise, it's a very small percentage, one house out of our entire map.
Yeah.
Yes, Carol.
I don't know that I feel comfortable making a decision without the applicant here.
Okay.
And so I would move to delay.
It'd be May 8, or May 4.
Continue.
Continue.
Thank you.
I was in the neighborhood here today, and there are, there is one house, I think it's across the street and down a little bit, like you mentioned, that has a garage in the front. But it is not typical at all. It is more typical like those that are to the right of the property where you can maybe see a little bit of the garage from the street, but it's the driveway along the side of the house. I don't know why they wouldn't want to go that way. I drove three or four blocks north on Lay Street, or Lynn Street, whatever that is. I did find two houses that had front-facing garages, but it, it is atypical. And I, I, I'm a zero fan of those garages in the front, as you all know. So, if there's anything we could do to not do that, it would make, it would really be good for me. One good thing that is happening, though, is that the developer is putting in sidewalk is in front of the two lots. So, that's good. But I would have a hard time agreeing with this request.
They're required on the sidewalk, though.
I know, but at least they didn't ask for that, too.
Yeah. I would, I would mention to the commission that we're looking at one item here, but we're looking at another item here as well. And so, it's going to be not, what we have heard is going to be magnified, you know, by two instead of one. And so, that's going to, I think that's something that the commission should take into consideration seriously.
I did have a question on that, as far as are we going to be rehashing the exact same staff report and comments?
Yeah, item number six is the law immediately.
Is there, is there a way that we can?
Nick could do a presentation.
I don't know, lawyer, from a law perspective, is that something that we can-
Since they're listed separately, I, I mean, it probably should be heard separately. It's just kept that way, but obviously, some of it can be-
Maybe truncated a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, on the reports and-
All right, thank you.
I'm, I'm for delaying it, this item and the next, until the applicant be here.
I agree, we should delay it. We should make a motion to delay this, vote on this to have the applicant present.
I'm making a motion to delay.
Okay, thank you, Carolyn.
I'd like to make a comment about that. I looked, Douglas Avenue has an, has an excellent and long reputation for community action. And I, I salute the people that have spoken today. But oftentimes, when there's a, you know, a neighborhood concern, we get some kind of written documentation or a motion from the neighborhood association, some kind of official, you know, act, rather than just people coming up one-on-one. And I didn't hear anyone representing officially the neighborhood association. I could be wrong.
I do know President Joe Youngworth had visited with Kyle Larson last week on this.
Joe couldn't make it tonight. I'm the vice president of the Neighborhood Association, Dean Brown. Okay. And what I hear here, these people, I'm, I'm, now if I'm over time, I'm taken
Right, well, and the public hearing-
Out of number five, number five.
No, the public hearing has been closed. So, it's just the commission to discuss now.
But, okay.
Yeah, so it is-
I heard that these people are telling about other things in other garages. They've done their homework on that. Why didn't they do their homework on the width of the lot?
My comment-
Again, that was, that was decided administratively by the staff. It was not before this commission.
My comment, as, you know, to, as a suggestion, is that if we do continue this for your, your neighborhood association to meet, and actually, I haven't heard that there was actually a vote by the neighborhood association. In fact, I could be wrong, and I'd like you to correct me if I am. It's, it's not your turn to speak. But my suggestion is to have an official act by the neighborhood association to, you know, to strengthen your argument. That's typical of other neighborhood associations in the city of Des Moines. So, that's just my opinion, but also my recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Do we know why the applicant wasn't here? Did they say they weren't coming? I mean, they're on the agenda? Was that?
Tyler said that they emailed him today and asked if there was an option to join virtually. And, yeah, I don't know if he gave a reason why. No?
Okay. And no one joined virtually, I assume?
They, they-
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Only for commissioners. I see. Okay, thank you. All right. Thank you.
You were.
Um, do, more, oh, there is a motion on the, on the board, Carolyn, to continue this item to May 4 meeting. All those in favor, raise your right, oh, sorry.
Want to say 4, or do we want to say till Monday?
I, wouldn't they offer another continuance at that point? So, I, as a commission, I'd like to hear it at the next meeting. Right, yeah. Continue to the May 4 Planning and Zoning meeting. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Okay. Item number six. Welcome back, Nick. Request from R.M. Madden Construction for property located at 2445 East Douglas Avenue for the same, for the same request.
Chair, members of the commission, Nick Tarpe, planning staff. Yes, as, as the chair mentioned, it is the same request. This lot is just to the, the east, so it's kind of the one that's wedged in the middle here. So, very similar presentation here. Here's the frontage of that lot. Same house plan. There's a little bit of a different architectural detailing on the front. So, there's some shutters, this kind of brow action here above the garage. So, that's what differentiates it from the other one. So, yes, it is virtually the same thing, but there's a couple of small features that differentiate it. Are there any other specific questions on this item?
Did the applicant, when you were working with them, provide any argument as to why the garage needed to be on the front? Like, was the argument something like, oh, within this market, this is the thing that anyone else buys. It doesn't matter. It looks like the other neighborhood. Was there anything like that? Or what argument was provided?
I think that's a really good guess. I'll be honest. I didn't work with the applicant, so I'm, I'm presenting here tonight on behalf of other staff that couldn't make the meeting. So, I, I don't know the answer to that question.
Gotcha.
Okay, thanks, Nick.
My question is, since this is similar to the five, why can't the agency move to continue this motion and be heard at the same date the other one is? It is within your authority to do that, isn't that correct?
I, sorry, go ahead.
The, the, opening it for the public hearing first and going through that, again, getting, giving their opportunity, even, even though it's a separate item, it's the same item, I understand, it's still-
It's redundant.
Even if it's redundant, it's a separate item on the, the agenda as, as listed, so.
And if the applicant would have requested it, we probably could have.
Correct. If, if the applicant was, you know, amendable in here, that would be correct. So, we-
All right. Thank you, Nick. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to speak in support of this item? Seeing none. Is there anyone who would like to speak, speak in opposition to this item? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone who would like to, who's neutral on this item? Sorry, did you, did I?
I'm not in the hearing.
I, I was asking for speakers for this item.
Can we just give the last one, is that the same, the same argument that we're both doing?
Right, I assumed that to be the case. Is that something that we can enter into the public record without having to go through the process?
I mean, yeah, you can take that into consideration, I think, for the sake of time here.
Okay, thank you. Right, okay. I will close the public hearing, open it up to the commission.
I will move for a delay.
To the May 4?
To May 4.
Thank you.
Meeting. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor to continue this item to May 4 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Thank you. All right, moving on to item number seven. City initiated a request for the following regarding properties in an area generally located north of Maury Street, east of Southeast 25th Street, south of East Market Street, and west of Southeast 30th Street. Determination as to whether the requested rezonings are in conformance with Plan DSM, amend the Plan DSM to revise the future land use designations from business park and industrial to low-density residential, parks and open space, and public semi-public, and to rezone an area from EX mixed-use district and I-1 industrial district to N-3C neighborhood district. And Bert Dross is here from staff to present.
Yeah. Madam Chair, members of the commission, Bert Dross, planning staff for the city. Item number seven is a city-initiated rezoning. The city's Neighborhood Services Department Director had actually initiated this rezoning. And it is essentially to restore residential zoning classifications to properties that were previously zoned residential under the retired zoning ordinance. So, here's, the yellow area shows the extent of the rezoning area. Again, Maury Street is the southern boundary of this, and I'll get to the reasons for why that is later. But it's important to note that this rezoning covers the area north of Maury that's residential. So, just for point of reference, Southeast 30th Street is here at the right side of the screen. The Titan Tire plant is here at the northwest corner. And then there's some salvage yards along Maury Street here to the west. So, I'll go through a series of maps now. So, this map, if you see the pink line, that's the boundaries of what's being rezoned. But the other colors, the blues, yellows, et cetera, is the retired zoning. So, you can see the yellow was R-160. That was a single-family district with a minimum lot width of 60 feet. That was under the retired zoning code. So, you can see where the pink boundaries is. This was all previously zoned residential. There were two parcels here that were R-3, which is a multifamily residential. So, the next map is the city's comprehensive land use plan map. And this is from Plan DSM. It was adopted in 2016. The dark blue is industrial, light blue is business park. So, it's been in the city's land use plan for many years to, that this area would eventually transition to either industrial or to business park uses. As I, as, when the area was up, you could see that Martin Luther King Junior Parkway goes right through the middle of this area. And given the proximity of WRA to the south, salvage yards to the east and west, and then the Titan Tire and the railroads to the north, the city just didn't, or felt that really the long-range vision of this would be industrial or business park. So, then when the city adopted a new zoning map in 2019, state law requires zoning to conform with the land use plan. So, as I mentioned, those areas were already zoned, or designated as business park and industrial on the land use plan. So, with the new zoning map, the areas that were designated as industrial were zoned as industrial. And then the areas designated as business park were designated, were zoned EX. So, again, these zoning districts have been in place since 2019. Since then, we've routinely heard from citizens who are concerned that, you know, they're zoned EX, they're zoned I-1, they're not able to get the financing they need to do improvements. They're not able to build new houses. They're not able to readily expand. And so, I guess after feeling enough of these complaints, the Neighborhood Services Director felt like, okay, this area is not transitioning to industrial or business park like we thought. Maybe it's just time to rezone it back to residential. So, that's how we got here today. And this is just the aerial. You can see the areas in pink are pretty much all single-family. The Chester, the Chesterfield Park is in this area here in the middle. And there's three churches in this area here that when they came in, when the new zoning map was adopted- in this area here that when they came in, when the new zoning map was adopted, they came in and zoned P-2 for the churches and the park was P-1. So staff's not proposing to change those, that's why there's some holes in this map. As far as the yellow line here, that represents 1,000 feet from a potential expansion of the city's wastewater reclamation authority treatment plant, just off of this map is WRA. You can see the corner of it here, and there's not, or there can't be any residential uses within 1,000 feet of the wastewater treatment plant, that's why the city has already bought out all of the houses that are kind of in this area here. And, and so, you know, the wastewater treatment plant is a pretty big investment, it's not likely that the city will ever be able to, or the WRA will ever be able to afford to relocate it, so they're pretty much set in this location. So they've been doing a study looking at what land the WRA might need to acquire in the future, and there's nothing official that's ever been decided, but it's possible that the WRA is going to have to buy some of this land south of Maury Street. And so, that's why we use Maury Street as the southern boundary of this rezoning, just because we didn't feel it would be responsible of the city to rezone anything south of Maury Street that would allow new houses to get built, that then the WRA and the taxpayers would ultimately have to buy and then tear it down if the WRA ever expanded. So we have heard from several homeowners in these houses south of Maury who are upset that they're not included in this city-initiated rezoning. And like I said, the city didn't feel it would be responsible use of taxpayer money to rezone the area south. That's not to say that individual property owners south of Maury couldn't apply for a rezoning on their own, there's nothing stopping them from filing their own rezoning application that would be considered by the commission and ultimately city council for rezoning, but staff isn't comfortable, I guess, recommending rezoning anything south of Maury to residential. So this map here, I know there's a lot on here, but again, the pink represents what's being proposed for rezoning. The heavy black line represents what was previously zoned as residential, so you can see the pink line generally follows the black lines. There are a few places where staff has deviated, I'll just point those out. Those three churches I mentioned, they were, they're zoned P-2, so staff's recommending to leave those as P-2. Chesterfield Park is P-1, staff's recommending that that stay as P-1. Then there's a parcel right here that's owned in common with this parcel to the west, so it made sense to just leave those since it's under same ownership, to leave that industrial. And then there's Titan Tire has a parking lot here that's in this industrial, so it made sense to leave that parking lot industrial. And then the north area here, there's a United Steelworkers Union Hall that staff recommended to leave that zoned EX since the Union Hall would require the EX zoning rather than the N-3C, which is a neighborhood district. So I guess I went through most of the history on this, so I'm not going to expound on that, but staff has recommended approval. The area that's being rezoned, the land use plan needs to be amended for the bulk of it to low-density residential, and then we're also recommending that the Chesterfield Park be amended to park and open space, and that those three churches be amended to public semi-public. And then as far as the rezoning goes, we've recommended approval of the rezoning to N-3C Neighborhood District. We did a neighborhood outreach meeting on March 29th. We sent letters to everybody within the rezoning area plus the 250-foot notification area, we sent it in both English and Spanish. Again, that meeting was held on March 29th, we had about 12 to 15 people attend, about half of them signed in. But the attendance, a lot of the people that were there, might be here tonight, but they were concerned that, you know, they own property south of Maury, so they were not happy that they weren't included in the rezoning. But then there are a few people in the area that liked having their properties zoned as industrial because they feel it gives them the ability to maybe sell it to a convenience store or to some other industrial use someday, so. And then, we didn't get as many comment cards back as I thought we might, we got about half in support, half in opposition, so these two are both in support. Top one was in support, but the bottom one just said they're undecided. And then another undecided, and then one in opposition. And again, this one at the bottom, I believe she's here, but she was, she owns property on the south side of Maury Street, so she's disappointed that her property's not included. And two more in opposition. And Tony Holdit submitted this letter. So here's the consent map, you can see the, one opposition is south of the rezoning area, and then the other, there's three that are within the opposition, or within the rezoning area, and then Tony Holt owns this property up here to the north that's just outside of the rezoning. So any questions for me?
Commission, any questions for Bert? Yes, Carol.
The low-density residential allows for single-family residents, two flats up to six flats, right?
The, yeah, the low-density land use designation would allow for densities up to six units an acre, yeah.
Okay, so is that what the go-to will be for?
So the proposed zoning district is N-3C, which is only one household, so if it were rezoned to like N-3C-2, it would allow up to two dwellings per lot, or if it were zoned N-3C-4, it could have up to four dwelling units per lot. The one caveat, though, is if they do an accessory dwelling unit in N-3C, they theoretically could have two dwelling units on each lot that way.
I'm just wondering if it's a little short-sighted to only go with single-family residences considering our future need for housing?
Yeah, I guess when the Neighborhood Services Director initiated the rezoning, the idea was really to restore the zoning to what it was under the retired zoning map, so it was R-160 under the retired one, so that was the thought, and I'm not saying that's right or wrong, but.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions from the commission for staff? Okay, thank you, Bert. Since the city is the applicant, we will move on to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience tonight who is in support of this item and would like to speak on it today?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, come on up.
Do I have to start?
Yeah, you can do it after you speak, just state your name and address first, and then you can sign in that paper. If you could speak into the microphone, it would help us hear, thank you.
Okay. My name is Darrell Papel, I live at 730 Southeast 25th Street. It's a fourth-generation-owned farm. It's a double lot, and it's got the lake right there behind the house and stuff. Now, they're sitting there saying that the zoning has considered it industrial, and then back into city zoning, and into, and now they're trying to make it back into residential. Well, mine's been listed as a family farm for four generations, and it's been commercial, and it's in the farm society. So therefore, what is going to happen to it? And every time I go to fix up my house, I've got the city coming in, taking my materials and telling me I can't have it there and stuff. So how can I fix up something if they keep jerking away my materials?
Okay, I'm sorry, I did ask for people to speak in, if.
I want to keep mine as the farm. Family generation-owned on there. I don't want it zoned as residential. That's all I got to say.
Okay, thank you. Can you sign into the paper? Thank you. Is there anyone who would like to speak in support of this item tonight? Okay, seeing none, if there's anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this
Hi, I'm Terry May, I live at 202 Southeast 29th Court. I really haven't dialed into much of this stuff recently, and I just got to do what I do, and, but it has got my attention, not so much myself, is that my daughter and her husband and that type of thing for the future, because with this all going down to a residential strictly, then that don't give me much, you know, because I got, there's like 10 acres there with my house, and it gives me some wiggle room to be able to do different, you know, whatever the demand, demand for, like, you know, I park the state fair horse trailers in there right now, I've been doing it for 15 years, you know, when I bring the animals over to the fair, they bring the empties over to my lot to stay there until they take them back up. Just different things like that that is going to tie my hands pretty tight or wherever is, you know, just, when you strictly have it residential, and I'm, you know, I like a nice place and all that type of stuff, but I don't know, I think they're moving a little quick on this thing or something, because it's, besides the churches, I really don't see anybody's, except the builder wanting to build down there, they, you know, everybody wants to make their own money in their own court, you know, and all that, but I don't know about being dominant with the residential, you know, you ain't build houses like it is now and just kind of, you know, if it's okay and they putting the hammer down, wouldn't end up making it hurt so bad. You know, I just, I'm not completely in favor because I just think it's too, for me personally, where I'm at.
Could you, oh, sorry. Could you point to your property on the, with the mouse, show?
I'm not too good with this stuff here, buddy, but I got a clip, that knows the story.
Are you this large parcel up here?
Yeah, let me see, yeah, that's a.
I think that's a horse farm.
Yeah, yep, that's, that's, yeah, that's what I'm talking about, yeah.
So I think he's this large parcel up here at the northeast corner?
Yeah, I got that right, and that's what I said, I do, matter of fact, I just got done building a 100 or 200 pad, I was going to build another barn, you know, another barn, and then just COVID thing, it all coming down, so I stopped, but I didn't know, somebody built a new, is that mine, that was the way to go, that's not me, so.
Okay.
That property was R-3 under the retired zoning map.
It was, can you say that again, Bert? Sorry, I didn't hear that.
It was under the retired zoning map, it was zoned R-3 multifamily.
Okay.
So, I mean, it would be.
So would the new zoning be more restrictive than the R-3 was?
Yeah, would it be, actually?
All right.
So, I mean, it would be within the commission's purview to recommend that, like, that property be excluded.
Okay, thank you.
You can see the cursor up here, the northeast, the big one. And is it just one parcel or more than one parcel?
Yeah, there's a, I got a house, and I got a rental house, it goes with that, 10 acres. It's all right there, and it's, yeah, here's the man, I'll just use your phone.
Sorry, I'm Terry.
Oh, sorry, Terry, if you could sign into the sheet there. I don't know, Terry, did you already sign into that sheet?
I would.
Yep, thank you.
I signed it downstairs.
Yeah, that's, that's not the official record for this. Thank you.
No problem, thank you.
All right, go ahead.
I'm Tony Holt, 129 Southeast 29th Court, it is the bigger red block there. I'm also a neighbor to Terry for the last 20 years. I think the concern is not, I think we support everybody else that's in the residential to get residential, but in his case, we'd like to block it out and leave it industrial as it currently stands. As he said, he's helped the, he works with the fairgrounds and he uses it. The other thing to note about his property is, it does have a history behind it, and it's been a landfill, and to zone it residential and put houses over top of it might not be the wisest step, where an industrial use would probably have the money to clean it up and use it properly, and meaning it is 10 acres next to the railroad, it, its future as an industrial property is probably way more valuable to the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yep, can you sign in on the sheet? Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in opposition to this item?
Good evening, my name is Janet Anaya. I'm the owner of the home, the 2563, right in the border of the rezoning in the south of Maury Street. This question is kind of weird, because the question is, are you approve or opposite the rezoning to residential? Is you are, I need to answer as a citizen, I agree with the rezoning because the residential is good for the neighborhood and is good for each family in the home. But there's no question they ask, is, I agree is in or I agree is out. And I understand all this stuff, well, English is not my first language, it's kind of difficult.
You're doing fine, I understand.
Yeah, to understand everything, but, and what I, I just request that this can be possible, get a new study for include in the rezoning the houses that will be that were excluded. For example, my, the south side, yet they explaining already, the south side of Maury was excluded, and I never received any letter that say, in the future, your house will be excluded from the, from the rezoning. I just received a letter with the market and everything, and that's it, and I look like, okay, I'm outside.
Right.
I want to be in, and I'm living in this place for five years, living by myself, but I'm building a family now, and I, and now it's my home, so, and it's my neighborhood. And I think that's natural that the place that you consider your home and you're building a family, you want to be part of the better rezoning, as a better path to residential rezoning. So I had that more benefits and everything, I understand that's more benefits and everything, but my opposite, not to do rezoning, I'm opposite because I was excluded.
Excluded.
My home was excluded.
Yes, I understand.
So it's that possible, consider a new study and include that some, I cannot speak for my neighbors who's right, my neighbors, my, my right side, my left behind, but I think everyone can. I think everyone can think like, like that or something like that. I don't know, it's only that I need to say.
Okay, thank you so much. If you would sign into the sheet there, I'd appreciate, thank you. Next, thank you.
Hello, everyone, I'm Maya Williams and I live at 728 Southeast 27th Court. Hi, Justin. And I would like to back up her on their conversation about the range of the zoning that's gonna be rezoned to residential as the concerns that there were that is difficult to build onto your house and not be able to do things that a residential is available to do so because of the business park and the, and the industrial park that is, that is currently. I am not sure why the water treatment is being more, like, is superior in the decision despite the people who live in this neighborhood and have been here since Chesterfield is the original neighborhood of Des Moines. I don't understand why the zoning is making it smaller of a neighborhood. I missed the opportunity to speak on the legacy from earlier and so I didn't know that that was conclude, like, if that included Chesterfield Park as part of a legacy neighborhood. I don't know how to get that information. If someone would give that to me, that'd be amazing. But I would just like to state that I do disagree with this and I feel like the restrictions should be less in N3C. I feel like it should have more options for multifamily or if we do want, I know that you mentioned that someone wanted a convenience store. It would be great to have a grocery store in that area and rezoning it to purely N3. It does not give that option so that we could have somewhere closer for us to eat and get our groceries than having to go to the south side or having to go to Pleasant Hill or northeast side to get our groceries since we are in such a secluded neighborhood. I think that's all I got.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening? Anyone? Okay. Seeing none, I will, well, first of all, does the commission have any questions for staff with items that arose out of, yeah, go ahead.
Can you, what was the, what triggered the, this to be fired off for reconsideration?
Sure, the, I guess rezonings can be initiated any one of three ways. One, the property owner could initiate the rezoning. Two, the city council could initiate a rezoning. Or three, the neighborhood services director could initiate the rezoning. So like, planning is actually within development services department. So it was the neighborhood services department, which is where like zoning enforcement is housed, they're the body that initiated the rezoning. So that's really the impetus and it came out of, I know there, you know, hear a lot, hear from a lot of people who want to build decks, build garages onto their houses, they want to sell their properties, have trouble getting financing. So I think they were just tired of hearing from so many people having issues with the industrial and the EX district that they reached a point where they said, okay, it's time to rezone it back to a residential district.
There are more questions for staff? Chris?
I had one, sorry, it seemed like we went from business park and now we're swinging all the way back to residential. Is there a reason that we didn't pick a different zoning type that would, you know, really truly empower a more mixed use and actually more historically accurate, you know, mix of uses for this area?
Yeah, I mean, the same point Carol had earlier was that maybe the one family or one household residential is inappropriate, but I guess the intent of the neighborhood services director was just to restore it to what was there under the retired code. So predominantly, I'll go back to that initial, this map here. Yellow was one family residential, then brown, so the gentleman that we heard from a little bit ago that owns these lots here, his property was owned R3. And then there's one lot here along the south side of MLK, East MLK Parkway, that was zoned R3 multi-household. But everything else was zoned R160, which was one family. And so the idea was just to restore it to the one family, one household per lot.
There's also that one property to, on the east.
Yeah, you're right, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So what, what effects would take place if we did approve this zoning? Would folks that are operating under the current code be forced out eventually? What, I guess, yeah, how does this all?
No, under, under the existing zoning, like EX or I1, if a house would burn down or if a tornado would go through there, under the current zoning, they couldn't rebuild since the new residential use is not allowed in the industrial district or in the EX district. We've amended the code last year to allow residential properties in EX to construct garages because when the new zoning ordinance was adopted, that any residential use in EX could not expand at all, but we did amend the code so they could at least build garages in EX.
Could you explain again the logic of why the properties south of Maury should not be rezoned to the retired zone, retired zoning?
Yeah, because the WRA, if you see, there's an old railroad right away here at an angle, so the existing WRA facility is south of that and there can't be any residential uses within 1,000 feet of that. So a big chunk of this area south of Maury is already within 1,000 feet. But then there's the chance that, you know, in say 40 years, 100 years, the WRA needs to expand because it just wouldn't be financially feasible to pick up and move the whole WRA facility elsewhere. You know, it makes sense that if the WRA ever needs to expand, say several years down the road, it would have to do so in this area and then at that point, the WRA would have to buy out any houses within 1,000 feet of that expansion area. So I guess staff, the neighborhood services director wasn't comfortable rezoning anything south of Maury just because ultimately it could cause new houses to get built that would just have to be bought out and torn down.
I guess I get that, but if, if a person who lives in one of those, there, there are houses there now, right?
Yes.
And so those people who live there now can't get a permit to build a deck because one day maybe the WRA might have to buy it? That doesn't seem fair.
Right.
Like, let the WRA buy it then. I mean, I don't, that's, that's the WRA's problem.
Yeah, and those homeowners could initiate a rezoning, they could go down tomorrow and file an application for a rezoning could be considered as well. It's just the city initiated rezoning, we weren't comfortable initiating anything south of Maury.
Carol, did you have a question or a comment?
Yes, question. Ms. Williams, your question about the legacy park, Chesterfield Park, I'm pretty sure that's, that's right in the middle there and it is retained, right? It's going to be parkland.
Yeah, the city park is actually already zoned P1 parkland and that-
Is that the one you're asking about or no?
Yes.
Okay, that is safe, right?
Yeah, yeah, that's-
Okay.
-being retained, yeah.
Okay. And I saw on some of the comment cards, I think that there was concern about traffic increasing with this zoning change. Can you address where those concerns may come from and, and?
Yeah, I, I read those too. I, to be honest, I couldn't understand unless people didn't want the vacant lots to be developed with new houses.
Okay.
But I think under the current zoning is industrial and business park, you could by right have some uses built that would generate a lot more trips than the single family houses.
Okay, and the gentleman with the 10 acres that he uses-
Yeah.
-for temporary storage or for horse trailers during the state fair, that is, I'm presuming a potential citation or-
There's actually something in the code that allows-
Allows that.
During the state fair-
Oh.
People can park, yeah.
Okay. So he would be okay with, with R1 or does he need R3?
N3C. N3C is what we're considering.
Yeah, and-
I'm sorry, I, I get-
N3C is a one household district, yeah.
And is he okay with that or no?
The existing use would be allowed, since he has more than an acre, he could have the horses.
Uh huh.
So I think the existing use, you know, but if the commission wanted to recommend that that property be left industrial, I don't think staff would object to that.
What about the agricultural land?
Sure, yeah, and I visited with him a little bit, like, he has two lots here that he, just there's a house and then he has storage of his own personal trailers in the backyard under the N3C, he could still do that and he asked, he was saying he wants to have big gardens back there, that's also allowed in the N3C district. So I didn't hear any, him say anything that wouldn't be allowed in N3C. Under the current I1 district, like, if the houses would be destroyed, then the houses couldn't be rebuilt there unless the property was rezoned to a district like N3C.
Okay. And speaking to a couple times it's come up, is, is there another zone that would allow more mixed use and small commercial to exist in this area?
Yeah, if, in order to allow commercial, you would need to be like an MX1 or an MX2. If you're just interested in small multifamily, it would be like NX1, NX2, but those would require continuances so we could re-notify it for that.
And if there were, say, individual lots that, you know, wanted to build a convenience store or grocery store, it could, they could apply to rezone that individual-
Absolutely.
-lot to be a mixed, you know, to be a MX1 or whatever would be appropriate for the use.
There's nothing stopping any property owner within this area from filing a rezoning application.
Is there a reason that MX3 is not, I mean, again, we were looking at this as office park. MX3 seems to be the most inclusive of that use case, but also inclusive of the actual residential options as well. Is a reason MX3 doesn't seem like, like the best middle ground?
Yeah, I think, I would at least be hesitant for MX3 because it allows like liquor stores, the bars. It allows several uses that really aren't good matches to have next door to a one household property. So like, say you had, lived in one of these homes, I don't think you would want your neighbor to develop their property as like a bar and then you'd be living next door to a bar.
You might want that more than you want the uranium plant though.
Right.
I think I'd like to live next to Carl's, that's all right.
Yeah, so like right now, under M or I1, the industrial, some pretty obnoxious uses could go in there by right today and be adjoining some of these houses as well.
And then you, if you, if you rezone it back to its sort of actual use, which is residential, the uranium plant could still come in, buy everybody out and rezone it back to-
Exactly.
-that if they wanted to.
Right.
Which they haven't done.
Right, right. And when the comp plan was done in 2015, 2016, it really was the thought that, oh, now with MLK coming through, this area is going to be ripe for, you know, some new industrial uses, some new heavier commercial uses, and that just hasn't happened in those last seven years. And that's a big reason the neighborhood services director was ready to initiate, initiate this rezoning.
I have a question about the, the 1,000 feet boundary. Is, where is that taken from?
It would be from where the waste is stored. So it's not necessarily from the WRA's property line, but it's 1,000 feet from where any waste is stored on the property.
And can you point on the map to where that is?
You can see the corner, I wish I had a better map here, but there's a pretty large building and this is that corner right here that has, it's a solid waste storage facility.
So if you offset from that, from that 1,000 feet, it wouldn't be east west, right?
Right, it's at an angle, yeah. And you can, you can see where the houses are missing.
Yeah.
There's like a church property here that's allowed, but all of the residential have already been bought and torn down that are within 1,000 feet.
So to me, it makes sense kind of along the lines of what Andrew was saying is that maybe that pink line can encompass the neighborhood south of Maury and still be outside of that 1,000 foot boundary? Is that, could it be that way?
Yeah, yeah, over this area here.
Right.
But again, that wasn't part of this application.
Okay.
And like rezonings can be initiated three ways by council, by the property owners or by the neighborhood services department director. So it would take one of those three entities to initiate a rezoning south of Maury.
Okay.
So I think the fastest way for these property owners is just to initiate it themselves for their own properties.
Wait a second, so if we provide a continuance, which would provide opportunity to rethink whether or not we've got the right zoning proposal, we're saying that we also can't modify the boundary as part of that continuance?
No, because that would really be the commission then initiating the rezoning of those parcels south of Maury.
But if you're doing the rezoning already and we just recommend you should probably change your map a little bit, isn't that already initiated by you and you're just changing it at the recommendation of the public and of the commission?
I don't know, Chad, do you have an opinion on that? I wouldn't, I guess.
Is this a recommendation, like, if the commission gives a recommendation, would that go in front of the city council and then the city council would decide whether or not?
Right, and the city council could turn around and initiate it, yeah. Yeah, it's part of, that is a good idea, Abby. It's part of your recommendations, like, if you say staff or commission recommends approval of this rezoning, plus we recommend initiation of a rezoning south of Maury.
To encompass the existing neighborhood.
Right, then, then council could say, okay, we will go along with that recommendation and initiate a rezoning, but, but that.
Okay. The city would, the city would not be in support of that-
Right.
-but the council could initiate it since it's within their purview to initiate that.
Right.
Okay. Are there any more questions for staff? Yes, Justin? Okay, go ahead.
So I think I have three questions because I'm, I'm really confused. So my first question is, what is actually wrong with the current usage? People indeed are not able to build decks and is that in part because of the banks? Doesn't see that the zoning is correct to get their investment back?
Yeah, because right now those districts don't allow for residential uses, so everything there that's residential is considered a non-conforming use.
Okay.
And you can't expand a non-conforming use.
Okay. And that's city?
Right, yeah. Yeah, so the existing uses are allowed to continue as legal non-conforming uses.
But no additional add-ons, okay.
Right, and so there couldn't be any new houses in those areas or anything that would expand the uses.
All right, then I can answer that one, then my next one. So we've heard from the public, what, I guess this will be actually how I actually vote, I need this answered really well. What problems, and I know you will, but what problems will happen if we do rezone this the way that the city is recommending?
I guess the biggest problem I see is that if, say, Titan Tire wanted to expand or say the salvage yard at the west side wanted to expand, then they would have to come in and rezone their property. Right now, in, under this industrial, Titan Tire could buy these properties and do an expansion into the neighborhood.
All right, and then my third question. Is this a rezoning issue or can we fix this based off of just a policy change to allow for deck extensions and the usage, what's currently going on? Because it just seems like a huge, for me, a huge leap to rezone. Is there something else that we can possibly do?
I guess hypothetically amend the use table to allow residential uses in the industrial districts or the EX districts, which staff wouldn't support.
Could it be specifically to this area since it's so unique or would that go against something, I don't know, is that a legal question?
Yeah, I don't know how we would be able to do that.
Yeah, that would require an ordinance change in which would be probably much more, I mean, that's gonna be very selective and the zoning is probably the more appropriate route, I mean, ordinance wise.
And if, if the industrial areas on the outskirts- And if, if the industrial areas on the outskirts of this neighborhood wanted to buy up some properties and expand, they could also ask for a rezoning of those properties to industrial, correct?
Correct, yeah. And just like any of the people we heard from tonight that would like the ability to do multifamily or multi-household, they could also file an application tomorrow-
Right.
-for rezoning.
It's not set in stone, is what we're saying.
Right.
But if we do do a rezoning, you end up with the inertia behind that where a corner grocery store or multifamily would have more impediment to actually do that than if we basically just allowed for it now, so if we said, look, this, this neighborhood you're looking for is too restrictive, you know, that would make it easier for them to actually do a truly proper multi-use neighborhood, which I think is what part of the public is asking for, and probably makes the most sense for our community anyway.
I, I, sorry, I agree with you in some respects, but I also think that when you have the opportunity for individual properties to ask for rezoning, you also leave open a public hearing option where neighbors can, uh, voice their concerns over what is proposed to go into that, and so, that, that could be seen as a plus as well, because you would have more neighborhood input on what is going to be done around, on properties surrounding them.
And again, I would just point out that the area is pretty much 100% surrounded by fairly intense industrial uses, Titan Tire, the WRA, um, salvage yards, east and west, so, you know, realistically, are we going to see condos go in there? I don't know, but I just think given, you know, this is a fairly small residential pocket within an industrial area, I just don't know that we're going to see the mixed use or the multi-household uses go in there.
Well, I mean, that's, that's, that's your opinion, and I respect it, and you, you may be right, but what is really irritating me about this is that there's all these, probably hundreds of people who live here, and it was rezoned industrial underneath them, and then they, probably half of them didn't know it or more, and-
Right.
-it was just so that maybe one day, some unnamed industrial use could come in and have it be real easy, and in exchange for that, it's real hard for them, and that's not fair, and so it sounds like the community service, whoever you said, is trying to fix that.
Right.
And they almost fixed it with this map, but they've missed the bottom part of it, and so I think we should either tell them no, take it back and fix it, or, uh, I don't know, I guess, ask, see if the city council will do the right thing.
Right, yeah, you could put that in your recommendation to see if council would be willing to do that.
So would the path there be a continuation with the recommendation that both the use and the boundary be reconsidered? Is that something that, I mean, I, this is what I can't really understand, because I don't approve of this map, I don't like this map, I think that we've gone from a long-range plan that I think was a bad plan, and we've now gone to a long-range plan that doesn't look long-range, there should be a middle, and the question is, what are we allowed to do right here to indicate that the community and we do not, sorry, not all of we, sorry, the community and some of we believe that it's not the right approach? What actually gets the door open to both adjust boundary and use? What would be that recom-
I think it would be recommending, you know, approval of the area north of Maury, but also with the recommendation that council initiates rezoning the area south of Maury as well. I mean, I don't know how you would, otherwise you would say, I would recommend denial unless council initiates the rezoning of the area south of Maury, so.
I mean, recommending denial if we don't actually readjust the use and the area, to me, sounds like a very good option.
Yeah?
Are there any more questions for staff? Oh, sorry, turned off my mic. Um, if there's any more questions for staff?
Yes, I've got a question. If in, if being centuries of us having this farmland and everything, and generations of all of us living down there and stuff, and the junkyards and everything, there's a lot less junkyards than what there used to be, there used to be a general store down the block from us when my dad was growing up and stuff, you're talking about bars coming in, there ain't been a single bar or store or anything that looked at our place, and we always welcomed everybody and stuff, and every family in the neighborhood looks after all their kids and everything, and takes care of each other and stuff and everything.
Okay. Thank, thank.
And, and, a lot of the stuff that you're stating is a big mistake, as far as industrial and residential, we've all got along for centuries, so why change it now?
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing now.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, uh, commission discussion or motions?
I think we should take the time to actually do this right, I guess I would, I would recommend denial of this, I, I would be opposed to this plan.
Me too.
I tend to disagree with that, in that I think that what is proposed to be rezoned does make sense, I think the area south of Maury should be rezoned as well, and that we should recommend city council initiating that, um, but I, I don't have a problem with what's shown as a first step.
Anyone else, or, yes, Carol?
I would, I would not want to go mixed use, I think maybe more dense residential, two or three flat, um, was the basis of my question regarding single-family only, um, mixed use doesn't seem right to me in there, I, that's why I was asking about, uh, I was picturing two, maybe three flat, that, on the residential side.
Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion that we can vote on?
I would remove, I would remove, uh, oh, sorry, would move, not remove, I would move to reject the plan.
Okay, all those in favor of the mo- That's the rezoning of this area? Okay. Uh, all those in favor of Chris Draper's motion? Do you have what you need, Carol? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand, please. Well, if the motion fails, oh, if the motion, if this motion fails, then another motion can be presented, is that, do, I'm right on that, right? Yes, okay, is that what you were asking, or were you asking if it, if it passes, if there's a next step? Okay, so let's vote on that motion, all those in favor of denial. All those opposed? I think that's everyone, right, so I don't have to ask for pass? Five to six. Okay, so, do we have another motion?
Yeah, I can make a motion, um, move staff with an additional recommendation that the area south of Maury be, um, in, the rezoning of that area be initiated by city council.
Okay. Although-
I just want to clarify something, that would be a recommendation, it's, you're unable to, I guess, initiate it, but it will be a recommendation, just to clarify on that.
Right, right, it's not a sure bet, but it's, yes.
The south of Maury is not what's already included, included in the rezoning?
South of Maury is not included right now in the rezoning, and we don't have the authority as a commission to include it.
But that's what that motion was.
But it's a recommendation to city council to initiate it.
Okay. Thank you.
And then the, the one-offs would, would not be cured, they would all go to this new single-family, the farm, the, the other farm.
Correct, as motion.
Unless you would like to make an amendment to alter the lines of the district, can that be included on the motion, right? Right, to exclude certain properties. Did any of the uses described by the homeowners require different zoning?
I didn't hear anything that would, um, I know the gentleman who said he's in his fourth generation of his farm on southeast 25th, it sounds like those are all uses allowed in N three C, the residential use, the, um, storage of personal trailers, the big gardens, the, um, I guess urban agriculture is allowed, so, and then the one on the northeast corner, where the horse farm is allowed, um, I guess that one I'd be more comfortable with leaving it zoned, I forget if it's EX or I one, but if that would be excluded, then that would give them more rights for their property, uh, but again, since it's over an acre, they are allowed to have the residential use with, um, some animals, like horses.
So would there need to be a motion to exclude them, to give them that right?
Uh, you can make amendment to her current motion.
Can we make a clarification on Bert's comment? You said urban agriculture, which would be 134 372, which as you know is a major bear bug of mine in general, is not actually an N, N three C, is it?
I'd have to look at the use table, um-
Because it's not, unless I misunderstand the table here, so he would actually be impacted. Or are you saying that he's actually, are you believing his operation falls under 371, which I don't think it does, that's an urban garden, not a, right, but that's not production agriculture, crop production is 372, and we actually have very little 372 opportunity in the city, which I think is a major problem.
Mm-hmm.
So we would be causing him hardship.
But are you just your own personal garden, or are you selling your crops to farmers' markets or anything like that?
Um, I was, I'm, I'm using it as personal, but eventually, I was thinking on taking over my grandpa's, uh, farming deal and history and produce farming for them, for me, see, I've got my cousin-
Yeah, I think the way he's described it as a 372, which would be a hardship. Okay.
So, right now, it's, it's just personal.
Mm-hmm.
So, out of curiosity, sorry, I just want to sort of get to the bottom of this, the zoning on these two lots, is there something that would allow urban agriculture, as Chris said, um, since we're not completely sure that that's included in an N three C?
Tyler, can you go to the-
Your urban agriculture is only right now in A P one, P two, we have some alternative uses possible, but again, it excludes a whole lot of opportunity in this city.
So it's only allowed in the A districts?
So it's not allowed, yeah. Right now, if it's zoned I one, it's allowed, crop production's allowed as a, um, conditional use, or nursery or truck farm is allowed by a, um, conditional use, under the N three district would be the next column over, uh, it would not be allowed by a, um, by a conditional use.
Okay.
I've been banging on about this one for months, so yes, I think this is a significant problem, this actually does affect him and plenty of others when we're talking about urban agriculture in a densifying city, this 372 is a major problem, that we really, really need to fix if we're serious about it.
So, I'm willing to ask for an amendment to your motion to exclude, um, the two properties that have either agricultural or, um, farm animals on them, but I just want to make sure that what they are zoned will allow them to do that.
Sorry, point of information, did we clarify what the usage, proper usage was for the horses Tuesday? Was that still urban agriculture? I don't-
I assume that would be urban agriculture.
Yes.
Well, actually, 372 is not very specific what happens to horses though, right? Horses would still be industrial, wouldn't they?
If we leave those two properties industrial, would they still be, um, like grandfathered in for what their, their uses are right now, so they wouldn't need to do a conditional use?
Well, I think I heard him say that he's not, he's only using it for personal garden now, so-
Right.
-if he would change to the nursery use, then he wouldn't need to get a conditional use to change the use.
Okay, but not a complete rezoning, if we left it I one?
Correct.
So if it's already grandfathered in, are you telling me that we have to go down and change it all? Or if it's already grandfathered in, but grandfathered?
No, no, grandfathered is just a term in planning to say that the use that existed-
Yeah, we would have to research to see if they do have legal non-conforming rights to that.
Okay, yeah, and you wouldn't have to, if we, if we would vote to have your property remain I one, then you wouldn't need to rezone it, you would just need to ask for a conditional use.
Okay.
Conditional use, I believe, is through the zoning board of adjustment.
Board of adjustment, correct.
Right, okay, so-
So do you want to make a friendly amendment?
I would like to make a friendly amendment to exclude, uh, that property, I don't know the exact address.
Yeah, what was your address?
730 Southeast 25th Street.
730 Southeast 25th Street, and if it is okay with-
And then, the other was 202 Southeast 29th Court?
Right.
Okay, yeah, I got the two parcels.
Okay, so, as Bert just confirmed with them, do, is that enough, Tyler, or do I need to, that have more specific verbiage there? Okay, okay, we're clear, um, to exclude those properties from the rezoning.
That's acceptable to me.
Thank you. Okay, if everybody's-
What do we do with the property that didn't notice show up tonight?
I think they need to go through individual rezoning for, if-
Is that-
-properties that don't-
Is that fully fair, because we had a guy not show up tonight, and we actually waited for him?
It's a, it's a very large area, I don't, I don't think it's fair to ask that every single person sign off on it in a public hearing.
Oh, I mean, is there a way to identify, someone identifies and, hey, in 30 days, I'm relevant to this, I should be able to sign up for this exemption as well, is there?
I assume everybody in the area was notified by the city? Yep, 20-day and 10-day notices, so, and if they, so if they had an issue, they had the time to notify the city or arrive here today. Okay, the, let's vote on the motion, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Oh, uh, cut, yeah, opposed, and pass? Motion passes, correct?
Still on the topic? While you're counting?
I got-
Sorry, I'm horrible at counting.
Ten to, zero to one?
Ten, zero, one, what's the final?
How do we address some of Chris's concerns with urban agriculture there, though?
Not on this item.
Yeah.
Okay, because I mean, it's connected, so what, yeah, how, yeah. Is that a conversation outside of this?
Yep.
Yeah.
We're going to move on to item number eight. Okay, item number eight, a request from Penske Leasing Company, oop, turn that mic off, thank you, a request from Penske Leasing Company, um, for a review of a public hearing site plan, Penske Truck Rental for property located at 4101 East 14th Street, for type two design alternatives to allow exterior light poles up to 30 feet in height, or maximum height for exterior light poles is 20 feet, and to allow an adjustable pole mounted, pole-mounted light fixture when cutoff directional lighting is required. And Michael Delp from the staff is here to present.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission, um, this is Penske Leasing Company, uh, requesting, uh, these type two design alternatives for a site plan that was submitted, they're doing site improvements, uh, for the onsite truck and transportation terminal use, um, here's a map of the project site, um, it's 6.16 acres, um, it's, it was kind of pre-existing, but it did recently rezone to an I one district to allow for the expansion of that, um, truck and transportation terminal use, um, the applicant has proposed some additional lighting to go along with these site improvements, um, here's their photometric plan, they're, um, proposing, um, 18 adjustable light fixtures and five 30-foot poles on- 18 adjustable light fixtures and five 30-foot poles onsite. It's kind of hard to see here, but when the lines are coming off of here on their plan, there's going to be three fixtures on each poles, and then they're going to have some pictures on the back end of their building here. These will be oriented towards the eastern portion of the property. I can go back to the aerial view too, if you need help with that. Currently, these are, proposed to be these fully adjustable light fixtures. They're called Duraform medium and floodlights. They have the ability, the applicant sent some examples of their ability to be adjusted to different angles. Code does require cutoff type fixtures, down-facing to minimize glare and impacts onto adjoining properties. So two of these examples here kind of show that it has a pretty wide freedom of adjustability to shine in different directions. The applicant is proposing to have them at 45 to 60-degree angles. And their current photometric plan, which I showed on the previous slide, is meeting our maximum foot candle requirements required by code. There are up to two at the property, two foot candles at the property lines. So with their proposed angles, they are meeting that maximum requirement. They're at that requirement or below the requirement. We recognize from a staff perspective that for these trucking and transportational use, terminal uses, you have to provide adequate lighting for maneuvering on sites and providing security. We've had similar sites within the metro within Des Moines who have had these similar uses and they have conformed. They've used cutoff type fixtures. They've maybe asked for an extension to increase the height of the pole from 20 feet to 30 feet. They seem to do well with the cutoff type fixtures. It seems to be okay for previous projects. I've kind of gone through this information here a little bit in my previous slides, but this is just the staff report on this item. So staff is supportive of the waiver to increase the height of the pole to 30 feet. Basically, the recommendation that they're not going to use adjustable type fixtures on top and to have the approved cutoff type fixture, directional fixture approved by the Development Services Director. Our recommendation for the adjustable light fixtures, there's too many variables involved. We have the photometric plan here initially that's showing that it's within the foot candles, but after the site plan's approved, this could be adjusted into the future. It could have higher impacts onto properties, adjoining properties have higher impacts onto just light pollution within the area. So our recommendation would be to deny the request for the adjustable light fixtures. We would be willing to recommend approval for the 30-foot light poles with cutoff type fixtures.
Are there any questions from the commissioners?
Can you just clarify on the cutoff type fixtures? Do they, so they just downward, right?
Downward facing basically at this angle, so it's shining completely onto the ground.
Okay.
No, no sort of leaching of the light onto adjoining properties like adjacent or up into the air.
Okay. And is, and this might be a question for the applicant, but is there any comparison drawing of what a cutoff fixture, what coverage that would have as far as candles on the property?
For foot candles? I'm not sure on that. The applicant would have to speak to that on the reasoning for choosing these fixtures.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Is the applicant here this evening? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chris Ziegmeier. I'm here on behalf of Penske Truck Leasing for this property. I want to thank staff for looking, looking at our request and granting the 30-foot pole require, requests that we had. We are asking for also proof, the commission to approve the adjustable light. When we discuss this, the whole point of adding these light poles in this is for safety and security of our employees and also customers that are on our lots after, after, during the, during night times. Also for security, there's a rash of catalytic converters that are stolen every day in Des Moines, and lighting the lot, in this, specifically this area of the lot, will help in deterring that. It's one of our, one of our main concerns in doing, adding this lighting. When we talked with Baker Electric, who is the contractor that we contracted with to come up with the photometric design, they're the ones that, they gave us the recommendation of the 30-foot poles with the adjustable lights. They can be adjusted, like you said, anywhere from 0 to 90, but so if it, if you can do 25 or 30 degrees, when I discussed that with the contractor, we could allow the whole, the lighting of our, since they all face in, the lighting of the interior of that lot, of our lot at that degree. With them being horizontally down, the interior of the lot, based on the size, would not be covered by the lighting being at a, at the downward facing. We are, this property is surrounded all industrial. There is no residential that's in a distance that would, that would disturb them. And also the contractor did state that after the installation of the poles and the lighting, they would be coming back to verify that the lighting is contained within the lot, our lot and our property line and would not affect any of our neighbor, neighboring businesses.
Okay. Any questions?
Could, I'm, I still understand why you need the directional lights to be able to light your site. Like why, what is, what's different about your project than other ones that requires it to be directional?
I don't know who else has asked for the lighting to be this way. Our, when, when I was asking the contractor to design a photometric plan that would throw enough light to get to the middle of the lot, using, based on this being a part, the, the area behind the building is mainly for parking of, of equipment, and the equipment is normally tractors and trailers and stray trucks that have a 13 and a half foot to 14 foot height. So with the poles being, if, if along, in order to get light into that very middle of the lot, it was, we would require an angle to the, the actual fixtures in order to project that, that into the middle of the lot.
Could, so could you also solve it by putting more poles in the middle?
That'd be detrimental to the business as far as the parking that we have there. I shouldn't, detrimental is probably a strong word. It's, it would be, it would limit the amount of parking that we could, that our customers could utilize for the business.
Carol, did you have a question?
Thank you. Currently, there's, in, I guess I was more in the front of the building, there's a wooden pole that appears to have solar lights on it. Are you familiar with that?
That, that is city. So the poles along the, the front of the building, as far as, as far as along the street?
No, no, it's, it's in the parking lot, but it's?
Oh, the, that is, that's actually, I believe that's city as well, as far as what that was, we haven't, I'd have to double check on that, but you're talking about the one, the one that's right in the middle of, on the south side of the building?
Uh, no. Well, I think it's like on the northwest side of, it's not on the building, it's sort of between two lots. But it's a wooden pole. So you're saying those wooden poles are not yours and they will remain?
Anything that's on a wooden pole along the exterior of that is city, is the city's lighting.
What will your, what will your 30-foot poles look like?
They, it's, there'd be the stanchion and then it'd be a metal pole.
Black?
Uh, you know what? I didn't, I have no idea. I'd have to, we, I mean, I guess the color, I'd have to talk to the contractor to understand the coloring of the, of the poles to understand what that would look like.
Okay. And are these motion lights or are these lights on at 24/7?
These would be dusk till dawn lights.
Dusk to dawn, okay. And just one final question. The existing lights that are on the building that point down now, those will all be removed?
No, that, so the, the existing lighting that's around the building right now projects only about, I would say 15 to 20 feet from the building.
Uh huh.
And, and it was mainly for the door, the, the doors of the, of the, the bay doors for our, our maintenance shop.
So they would remain?
They would remain.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Chris, did you have a question?
Has a lighting boundary study already been done?
Yes, as far, as far as the, as far as what, what the contractor?
So I'm saying, so right, so right now currently, to know what level of light pollution's coming onto your land or what's relevant, that you're being influenced by, by your neighbors, has that already been done? Do you know what level of lighting is already seeping into your property from your neighboring properties?
No, I do not. No, there's not been a study on that as far as, as far as that. As far as our neighbors' lighting protruding on our, our property, I, I do not know.
Because it seems that would be a good argument for identifying that whatever your design is, is not actually contributing to pollution outside your property. That seems like that would be a positive way to look at what the intent of this ordinance would be if you're looking to do something different. The second one, so I'm looking at what you're looking at here, is any, are any of these lights facing towards a boundary? It's all on a boundary facing in, isn't it?
That is correct. All the, all the lighting, the existing lighting, the lighting that we're, we're discussing.
The lighting you're discussing. You're discussing lighting that is on a boundary facing in.
Yes, it would all be facing into the property.
So it seems like if we're looking to go somewhere different, if we know that you're not actually exceeding the current pollution at your boundary with an angle, that seems like that could be a logical solution to fit everyone's bill, wouldn't it? Or is, is that been discussed with you and staff before or not?
Yes, I have not had any discussions regarding that.
Okay.
As far as the adjustable lighting, is it something that you set at a certain angle and then leave? It's not something that you would adjust at different times or, at another time, you wouldn't say, you know, instead of 30% angle or a 30-degree angle, we want a 60-degree angle? You just, you install it at that set angle?
That, that is correct. We would, there's, that would be very labor-intensive to do that. We, we have things to do, so we would not want to, and if, if the, if staff would need to come out after their, if, if it is approved, as far as a, as far as having angle lights, you know, staff could come out and, and review what the, the contractor has done to make, to ensure that the, the lighting is at, is conducive to what everybody's comfortable with.
So you'd accept a modification of the angle of your lights post-installation to ensure that they would actually not violate any current level of light pollution at, at the lighting perimeter study?
Yeah, our intent would be to, with the contractors, to make sure that we're already in, in parameters based on how we set it. But yeah, if somebody would want to, from the city would want to come out and look at it to ensure that we, we have done our due diligence, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, you could handle that by just making a condition that the, any light from the fixtures can't spill over property lines or can't be over a certain foot candle over property lines?
Yeah, so we could allow angles as long as it does not contribute to light pollution?
Allowing the angles, yeah.
Based on what's already there.
Yes, go ahead.
During the staff presentation, we didn't see actually what the adjoining properties, how they function. I don't know if you have one available, staff, but you could, could you tell us, yeah, what the surrounding properties, what function they fulfill?
So the adjoining properties are kind of similar uses, warehouse, transportation terminals for trucking. To the northwest, you have a car dealership and possible development for another car dealership on the north angle. Yeah, they're mostly the same use. Down to the southwest, there's a self-storage building. Directly to the south, that's kind of more of that trucking and transportation terminal use.
I don't see any residential at all.
Yep.
All right. There are no more questions from the commission for the applicant. We can move on to comments from the audience. If there is anyone in support of this item who would like to speak, if you can come forward now. Okay, seeing none. If there is anyone in opposition to this item, you can come forward now. Anyone who is neutral? All right, seeing none. I will close the public hearing and open it up to the commission for discussion and motions.
Yes, I don't know how we phrase it. I would like to move that we allow for angling of the lights so long as any angle does not violate, you know, violate light pollution requirements relative to what's currently there. I'm not entirely sure how we state that, though. I, I don't think we need them to be straight down, so I think I am opposed to what staff's requirement is for them to be stayed straight down. But I don't want them to be angled such that we are causing pollution outside the boundaries.
I think the current angle that they have on, 45 to 60-degree angles, that's not above the foot candles, so that would probably be a good basis for recommendation.
We could approve it per the installation that was modeled in the photometric plan.
That's my, I apologize, because I hate using specific angles if we don't really know what their effect is. But I guess if we're saying that the, we're approving the plan, pending them having to modify if there is a violation of pollution levels, yes. Is that, not to make it even more confusing, sorry, trying to circular it.
Okay, so is?
So we're basically rejecting staff, aren't we, in favor of the applicant?
Right, so I think the motion would be to approve the type 2 design alternatives that the applicant has requested.
Conditional on a light pollution evaluation post-installation.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, or, or subject to provision of like a photometric plan that demonstrates the light won't cross property lines or something?
That would, yeah.
Yeah, I guess that's up to staff. My sense is that we should prove that it actually, the photometric plan is accurate. But I mean, I guess it's up to you guys to prove compliance with the accuracy of the plan.
Right.
Okay, all right. That's the, that's the motion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All right, motion carries.
Yes, the subject, or approval subject to the condition that the applicant installs the lights in accordance with a photometric plan that proves the lights not spilling across property lines?
Yes.
You got that, Tyler? Okay. You will, okay. All right, item number nine, a request from the Greater Des Moines Habitat for Humanity regarding property located at 4320 East 46th Street for the following, a review and approval of a preliminary plat habitat East 46th Development to allow for development of 15 one household residential lots. Shawna Barron from staff will present.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, Shawna Barron, planning staff. Item number nine is for the Habitat East 46th Street Development located at 4320 East 46th Street. Tonight, we will be reviewing item A, the proposed development plan. Item B relating to the installation of sidewalks has been withdrawn by the applicant as they have agreed to install the required sidewalks as well as the sidewalk connection to the school. Therefore, we will only be discussing item A tonight. I would like to note that staff is in support of the proposed development with the condition that a street stub be provided to the southwest. Here's the subject property. It is located on the west side of East 46th Street, directly across from a community school. This is a view looking west of the subject property, and then again to the southwest. Here's a picture looking south toward northeast Aurora Avenue, a little bit further south. And then we turn around and face north with the subject property on the northwest side of the street and the school on the northeast side. The subject property is currently undeveloped. The proposed development is for 15 one, one household residential lots and two outlots on a 4.2 acre parcel. As you can see on the aerial map, there is no sanitary sewer service currently that is being proposed to be extended along East 46th Street down to the proposed development. that is being proposed to be extended along East 46th Street down to the proposed development. This shows a slightly, um, less zoomed-in photo of the subject property and the adjoining lot. The adjacent lot, I should say. This is the preliminary plat showing the proposed 15 one-household residential lots and two outlots around a cul-de-sac configuration. A cul-de-sac in the proposed development would separate rather than connect potential future development of the adjacent parcel, eliminating the possibility for the most direct public route to the school. The adjacent parcel would require access to sanitary sewer service as well for potential future development to occur. In reviewing possible future connections, it would seem more favorable to extend sanitary sewer from the proposed development rather than connect to other sanitary lines within Hubble Avenue or crossing private property requiring public access easements. Several city departments have collaborated on this project and concluded their support of through streets rather than cul-de-sacs to promote connectivity between developments as well as emergency access ease of, emergency vehicle ease of access. Staff feels the most beneficial relation between the present proposed and future uses of land as well as the future circulation of traffic, emergency vehicles, and school-age children accessing the community school would be to provide a stub connection to the adjacent undeveloped parcel. In conclusion, staff is supportive of recommending approval of the preliminary plat with the condition that the applicant modify the street layout to include a stub connection. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Carol, do you have your mic on?
Where's the stub?
We are asking that the stub be connected, uh, to the southwest, so the parcel directly south of the west side of the subject property.
Potentially, that would be one fewer lot on our development.
Potentially, yes.
Do you want to go to the more zoomed-out aerial? Might have a better. There's a landlocked parcel in the middle where if you see where the N2B label is, there's a parcel there that, it's currently owned in common with one of the houses on East 46th Street, but, um-
Oh yes, this one here.
Chances are, if it ever develops with an urban pattern, there'd be no easy way to get to it. So it makes sense to stub a street from the north so that it could be developed in the future. And like Shawna said, that would allow, um, those people to have a sidewalk to the school as well.
Is the topography to the northwest, would it prevent a fifth, would it prevent the full 15 lots if you put a stub in? Or, I guess, I apologize.
If you look at the grading plan here, the outlots, it, that's the low area, and so that's where they're proposing their stormwater retention basin.
So if we put a stub in, we are actually removing a lot from their plan.
It would likely eliminate lot number five.
Yeah.
And there's no way to replace it to the north, is what we're saying, is, our understanding is we are making that trade-off.
Right.
Yep.
So you, you also brought up the emergency vehicle, um, issue, but if you, if it was not a cul-de-sac and it was a stubbed street, would that make it harder for emergency vehicles like a fire truck to turn around? They would have to?
They would, in conversations that we've had with fire, they would prefer that there be more ways to turn around. There is potentially also a, um, right-of-way here that could connect, um, and further allow flow through the multiple developments.
Are emergency vehicles, the size of a fire truck, able to turn around in a cul-de-sac? Or do they need to back down the street?
They are able to turn around in the cul-de-sac.
Yes, they are, is that what you said?
Yes.
And has there been any investigation of that MX-3 lot to the north? Is that something that a through street can go across? Or is there a reason that you wouldn't want to go to Hubble? Is there just ownership reasons that prevents that? I mean, as opposed to a stub down, I mean, is there a reason that's not on the table?
Um, that property owner, we'd have to ask that property owner. That hasn't, there's currently development on that, on that property.
Madam Chair, I have a question of just curiosity. Okay, so don't hold me to anything. The name of the street proposed is East Twana Drive. I recognize Twana Drive, I think from the Beaver Hill neighborhood. Is this on the same latitude? Whoops, or what's the, the story with somebody getting all this name appearing in a different part of the town?
Yeah, we actually extend the latitudes to do street naming east-west, north-south. So we extended Twana Drive and it does, uh, line up with this area.
It's Lower Beaver Neighborhood. I live on that street.
Any more questions for staff? Okay, thank you Shawna.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience tonight who would like to speak in support? Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead. The applicant can now, uh, present. You have 10 minutes. Please state your name and address.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Lance Henning with Greater Des Moines Habitat for Humanity, 2200 East Euclid, Des Moines. And that, uh, the project is for the 15, uh, single-family. It would be 11 to 1200 square feet. And that would follow Habitat's general program on there where the families would be going through the education and financed as part of that. The houses that we are doing, um, in there, well, we would propose that they would be on slab and that, uh, we would trade that off, um, for no basement for a garage as part of that. So that would be, uh, a new proposal for us to be able to do something like that. Uh, the houses, um, all 15 of those then, um, would be homeownership. And a key part of being able to do that, the single-family aspect is what is the overall consistent with the existing zoning and, um, all the housing around there is mostly single-family on there. So from the request, Habitat's requesting that the preliminary plat be approved as we've proposed with the cul-de-sac and without the condition of the street stub. One thing to note on this particular property is, uh, this has been before, the commission before with another developer, and the commission approved cul-de-sac and not the street stub. So that was February, uh, 2019. So there is, uh, overall some, some financial challenges on being able to make sure everything works. So we need all 15 lots with the cost to bring in the sewer and the water down, being able to do that. When you add the street stub on there, it is reducing the lots, probably would reduce two. Or otherwise, we'd be changing the lot size if we're only reducing it one. Being able to make that happen. And that land next door to the south is extremely expensive to try to develop. There's a number of reasons for that. If you don't have a street stub, you can still do that access, um, off of East 44th here. So someone could access off of East 44th into this, this property here, being able to do that. And if there is, uh, if you had to put the street stub in, um, to meet fire code coming through here, you would have to connect here. This would be too far on a, um, the distance for the fire to come through both of these and have any kind of turnaround here. So this would have to be connected all the way through. You would have to do this in pavement to connect that all the way through. And so there's high costs in being able to do all that pavement, um, aspect to be able to do it. Same kind of thing happens on, uh, challenges with the water line. And so being able to service in, when you connect over to East 44th, then, um, the water management, or the, the water then would have to be extended down to Aurora to be able to accommodate on there. So you've got some significant costs on having to extend that all the way down as part of that aspect. And then water management becomes a challenge, and so, um, we are going that direction. The way the water, the ravine here wouldn't allow you to access out of here. So the topography would be difficult to be able to get out of that north. And then, um, we did have our engineer take a look at what it would take to develop that south side. So if this, that's coming off that East 44th. So that, this is that south lot and being able to do that, so, um, the water. This would have, you'd have challenges on having enough room on the detention there. And then, um, the whole pavement that you'd do on the south side here, there's no place for that water to go. So East 44th has no stormwater management. So you would be, you put that street in, then you've got challenges on where all that water for that street goes as part of that aspect on there. So, just on the engineering and the, um, cost to be able to do that south piece, that doing a single-family on that south piece, you're going to be somewhere at $170,000 to $180,000 a lot to be able to develop that. So, um, it's, it's not really feasible to even do that second, that, that piece. So putting that stub in affects us being able to do the ability, um, for our development on the 15. Someone on that south lot does have access from East 44th and could do that. And then Habitat would be willing on the sewer side to leave a, um, a right-of-way between the houses so someone could access that sewer in a future development if they wanted to do that, but not put in and in the stub. So we could put the right-of-way in place. If that south side ever got developed, then they could access the sewer, be able to go through there. So I think, uh, our main piece then on there is asking for us to, asking, um, again, the cul-de-sac doesn't preclude the south lot from being developed. Habitat would be glad to put in the utility right-of-way to allow the sewer to be accessed and that the street stub puts an undue financial burden on the project that already is, um, bringing in that sewer and has some tight costs to be able to make it all work. So reducing the number of lots, then, um, we wouldn't be able to move forward with what it is on there.
Okay, any questions for Lance from the commission? Yes, Carol?
Did you ever consider, uh, a couple of two-flats?
Uh, it's, um, we were looking at single-family around there, so we had not looked at any kind of, um, larger density on being able to do that.
What about, you're doing garages, which is atypical, I know, right? Typically, what about a coach house on garages?
Oh, pardon me?
A coach house, an accessory, accessory dwelling unit?
ADU on there. Yeah, um, I think, I think ADUs have an excellent place for the community on there as far as the upfront development costs. It, it actually raises the cost to be able to do that.
Right, I, I guess I'm just trying to get to the point where you can satisfy the same amount of families, right, with less lots? That's all. But you're saying those, neither of those are workable for your model, sounds like?
Yeah, I, I think we were trying to go within the existing zoning and being able to, um, match what was in the neighborhood as part of that, as part of that proposal. So the 50-foot and, um, and the context of the neighborhood is a single-family.
Any other questions?
Is, is the topography such that the outlot has to be to the northwest? If the outlot was to the southwest, you flipped 5, 6, 7 in the outlot? So you sort of leave open the opportunity for developing to the south and still get your same number of lots? Is there something about the land there that makes that impossible? So then you don't put the stub in now, but you would still have access there if things change?
Good evening, my name is Tim West with Snyder and Associates, uh, 2727 Southwest Snyder Boulevard in Anthony. Uh, the, the low end of the lot is located in the northwest corner. We're required to follow the I-SWIM guidelines for the, I have stormwater management manual and pick up any off-site runoff that's coming in that direction. You can see on the south side, those, uh, those lines that are located along the south end of our, uh, lots 4, 5, and 6, you can see that that's significantly uphill from there. And as we're, we're, uh, draining all the way to the north end, we have to release to the north as well at the low point of the lot. So to move that property, or to move that outlot property towards the south would be starting to move it up the hill. And away from our outlet, that would be established down in the low end. Where not only would we be needing to pick up property, water from the east side there as it comes down through there to that low point, but also from, um, anything that would be coming down the roadway.
So this, that you're showing here, this is the current state or this is post-construction?
This is post-construction.
So is there something that has shows current state? Those, that is current state underneath, so?
Yeah, all that dashed line underneath is the existing contours, if, if I'm answering your question right.
Yep, I just wanted to make sure that I'm understanding that the current state is the dashed, the dark lines are the actual-
Yes.
Plan. And so the south lot proposal you had before, we put a retain upon the northwest corner of the south lot before, that doesn't sound like that's feasible either, does it?
I think that was-
Could you really even do that?
That was Lance's point, that that's still the low point of the lot, but it would have to, that would have to be a, that would be the location that you'd have to accommodate if you were to develop that parcel to the south. That's the lowest part of their parcel as well.
So if we approve this, the south lot really has no chance after this. Can, where would you send the water, anything else? Is that, I'm, I'm missing the point, I'm sorry. Like, how would you, how would you do both this plan and the south lot at all?
You would still have the same challenge with the south lot, whether you have it stubbed or a cul-de-sac. That, that challenge exists either way. This doesn't not, the cul, the stub, does, the stub street does not solve the challenges of the south lot. The challenges of the south lot are big and they're there, and what we do here does not impact that.
Any further questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience tonight who would like to speak in support of this item? Seeing none, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this item? You can come forward now. If you would state your name and address, and then you have five minutes.
Madam Chairperson, commission members. My name is Robert Livers. I own, and my wife, and I own that lot to the north and west of the proposed development area. Give you a little history. At least five years ago, a previous developer had attempted the same type of this development for this lot. And as Lance has indicated, there were many, many difficulties. Our main objection to him was that he couldn't truly assess the impact on our property for the water runoff that that detention basin would create. And I'm surprised that one property owner is allowed to diffuse their runoff onto another property owner instead of to a public sewer or stormwater treatment area. And so our concern is, we haven't developed that lot yet, we don't know how the lot will be developed. We will have retention basin issues for that lot all by itself, even without another development going in to our south. So with those things in mind, um, we would be opposed to any kind of diffusion of water, stormwater, surface water, to our lot. Our neighbor to, that's adjacent to us to the west, he's a new owner. He's not familiar with- He's not familiar with the runoff that is created by major storms. And so I tried to get in touch with him today, and he was unavailable. But that whole drainage area only has a tile intake, and I have no idea where that tile goes. This whole land was previously owned by the state of Iowa. It was a scale ground for wing semi-trucks. And I don't know where that tile goes, I don't know what its capacity is, and it flooded most of the ground down to the west from time to time. We get a major wet spring like we have right now, and we get some water problems down in there. But so far, they haven't experienced the problems to their buildings for that water runoff. And so besides the water runoff issues, I would be concerned about privacy, trespassing. You put a housing development in there, you get kids in there, and you're going to have a lot of people running around. And like you can see on the map, ours is heavily wooded and makes a nice exploration area for kids. So I would be concerned about what kind of privacy boundaries would be put up. But the primary concern is the water runoff and what the impact would be to our property and properties to the west. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. Fewer to sign in.
Any questions?
Nope, seeing none. Go ahead.
Kirk Whitlatch, 4360 East 46th Street. I share Livers' concern with the water runoff. You know, I kind of back my neighbor on that one. I have an undeveloped corner of the property there that it looks like a lot of this is going to drain off on. And I'm also concerned about how they're going to access, is the utility access going to go through my property? I'm kind of uncertain on that. I've had some problems with the development on the north of me, and I'm not real supportive of anything going on in the south, you know, so.
Okay.
No utilities would be going across your property? And I'd also mention that our engineering department has reviewed the stormwater management plan for this, and they have approved it. As you saw, it was a fairly large stormwater basin, so.
Who's engineering department?
We have two engineers on staff in the permit center. They're not here tonight, but they have reviewed it.
Is it right the city?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes?
My name's Marvin Cole, and I am at 4350 East 46th Street. I'm right on the north side of the front edge of the property there. I guess I was concerned about the size of the house. I was told by the last developer that the city envisioned that these were supposed to be bigger houses for square footage size. And I was under the impression that he wanted to build a 1,200-square-foot house with a basement, and was told that that wasn't going to be consistent with the way they thought this property should be developed. So I'm a little baffled at the, why one developer is told one thing and another developer is proposing something else, is that? And all of the houses that I know of that were developed on the other side of the road all have basements and garages, and, and it's more consistent with what's in there.
Yeah, I can speak to that. It's kind of the long answer, though. The previous owner, Savannah Homes, they weren't, they'd never submitted a plat, they were just in the rezoning phase. This was, it was zoned A1 at the time. This was back in early 2019, before the city adopted the Form-Based Code in 2019, at the end of 2019. So the property was zoned A1. The Savannah Homes had requested it be rezoned to an R160 district. One of the conditions that staff had recommended at that time was that a stub be provided to the property to the south, and like Lance mentioned, that was staff's recommendation, but the commission struck that from the recommendation at that time. But since this was before Form-Based Code, staff had recommended minimum house sizes, and that might have been what ultimately led Savannah Homes to withdraw the rezoning application, but that rezoning was withdrawn before it was ever finalized. So fast forward to December of 2019, the new Form-Based Code took effect. This property became zoned N2B, and N2B does have minimum house size requirements. So for instance, if there's a one-and-a-half-story without a full basement, they have to have a minimum 1,500 square feet of area. Two-story with a full basement also needs to be 1,500. Let's see, a single-story without a full basement needs to be at least 1,400 square feet. So there are, there are minimums that would apply. And that's why staff's not recommending it this, any at this time, because they're already within the Form-Based Code requirements.
Okay. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in opposition to this item?
Could I, I didn't understand that.
Oh.
So the, the current zoning requires a 1,400-square-foot house?
If it's a Yes, the current zoning, if it's a one-story house without a full basement, it's a minimum 1,400 square feet. If it's one-and-a-half-story without a full basement, it's a minimum 1,500 square feet. And then if it's two-story without a full basement, it's a minimum 1,600 square feet.
And you said that's, that the current plan
Yeah, that's
complies with that?
It would have to.
Okay.
Unless they requested design waivers.
You're welcome to come up and speak.
Hello, everyone. I'm Jose Alvarez. Me and my wife Wendy are here today. We live at 4300 East 46th Street, the, the house that's right adjacent to the, the property. We just wanted to kind of, we had this, we spoke with Martin, we had kind of had the same concerns. We just purchased our property recently, and we were, we were worried about the size of homes coming in and possibly lowering our property values and, and stuff like that. And also, there's also a lot of mature trees, trees around our property. Probably like the 70, 70 feet behind our house is all wooded area. And we just, we were just wondering about the buffer and how, if there's going to be anything to mitigate tree removal in that area. And that's all I had.
Thank you. If you can sign in, the sheet's sort of hidden under there. Thank you. Is there anyone else here tonight who would like to speak in opposition?
I guess I still have
Can, sorry, just so we can hear you better, can you come to the microphone, please?
I, I guess I'm just trying to clarify the point. I, I understood them to say that they were proposing 1,100 to 1,200-square-feet houses, and that would not meet the minimum. Is that correct?
Right. If, if they don't meet the minimums, they would have to seek design alternative, and I, I guess I can't speak for the planning administrator, but if the planning administrator doesn't grant them administratively, then they would come back to the Plan and Zoning Commission to this body for public hearing, and then you would get notice of them at that time.
Okay.
And, and Bert, if they had a basement without the garage, what would the minimum be?
With the basement, I believe that allows them to reduce it by 100 square feet. Just 100, yeah.
Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak in opposition? Okay, seeing none, the applicant can do rebuttal. If you want to address any of the issues brought up.
Ryan Doyle with Greater Des Moines Habitat for Humanity, 2200 East Euclid Avenue. I wanted to address some of the concerns regarding that came up with the public. Stormwater concerns, I think, are hopefully adequately answered, that while we can't solve all the stormwater issues in the area, I think what we do have proposed goes a long ways towards mitigating any potential adverse effects that this site would have on the neighbors or the area itself. We do work with staff, while we haven't identified exactly what house, exact square footage is. Typically, on all of our homes, work with staff to come up with a plan that, that they deem as suitable, both on size and garage, basement, all of these things. So it's, it's typical to our, our similar process. We make sure what we're doing does fit in the, the character of the neighborhood and doesn't, doesn't adversely affect neighbors. I would mention briefly on some of the costs involved on the sewer to the north and that stuff. So that represents bringing the public utility south on that, on, we're talking, yeah, there, there you go. So that, bringing that south requires on tearing up that street and re, and putting water, or excuse me, just sewer main in it, and that represents about 22% to 25% of the project itself, right there. From concrete work, that's a third of concrete work on this product, or this project. So just bringing those two represents kind of a, a huge expense, which is kind of driving the need to maximize the number of lots we can yield, just to make the financials kind of come together on this. Yep, so I don't know if there are any other questions?
Can you speak to the tree issue and what, I don't, I don't remember seeing a
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, thank you. Is there a removal map that shows what's going to be removed?
I believe there's a map that shows the existing tree canopy. Maybe it's the first one of this preliminary plat? Up there, I think it's showing, showing canopy around. Yeah, we, we are, we'll remove, I don't think there's a, there's an exact removal. I know the city has guidelines on exactly what we can remove, what we need to replace, so we're fully complying with that. And I know there is, even around the property owners to the side, even to our property line, there's significant trees that would continue to buffer to the neighbors around it, but it's not kind of explicitly called out on this. But I, 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 I wouldn't want to give the impression this, this feels like it's going to just, you know, remove all the trees in that entire area. I don't think that the character of those, the, the neighbors in the backyard is going to change a lot because of this. There'll still be pretty significant tree cover there.
Okay. Thank you. Does the commission have any further questions for staff before I close the public hearing?
I have a question for the civil engineer. Conceptually speaking, when a new development like this is proposed, are you required to detain all of the stormwater from the site so that the net impact on the surrounding properties is nothing?
It's required to bring the site back to pre-developed release rates. So I think that's the engineering way of saying that we would be releasing the amount of water at a rate that's equivalent to what the pre-developed status of that is. And without going too technical, we are required by Iowa Stormwater Codes to collect all that water and also meet different types of water quality and small storm event controls so that it can be conveyed into the existing drainage area in a way that's controlled after it's detained for a certain amount of time. So all of those steps have been taken into account, and stormwater modeling has been submitted to the City of Des Moines for their review. We meet stormwater quality aspects as well, which encourages infiltration into two areas. I'm going to, both the basin that's located kind of in the middle on the backside of eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, as well as the, the main basin located on the northwest side that, that meets both the small storm or the channel protection requirements from I-SWIM, as well as the infiltration guidelines, in addition to the 100-year detention. So it's pretty complicated, and that's where we work with the city engineering staff to make sure that we're meeting those stormwater ordinances that are not only set by the City of Des Moines, but it's adopted from statewide standards that are throughout the, throughout the nation, uh, throughout the state for right now, as long as the cities have adopted them.
Thank you, that's helpful. Sorry, is there any more questions? Yet.
Chairman, Chairman, if I asked a favor, could you have a staff person bring up the view, the picture of the lot facing west from the street? And this is the picture she
Oh, like the photograph?
Yeah.
Of that picture right there?
Yeah.
Or, okay.
You can see, at the very west end of this lot is where the high ground is. So everything from that high ground is coming towards the street. So you're, if I understand this correctly, you're going to raise all this ground in front just to push all the water to the left?
Yeah, I can't speak to the grading. Okay, yeah, it's been approved by the city engineering staff. I, I mean, there is going to be some grading work that will be done on that. Yeah, that's generally happens during development. Commission, have any other questions for staff before I close the public hearing? Nope. All right, I closed the public hearing on this item. Discussion or motions?
I believe the applicant had offered some concessions or some additions to the staff's recommendations. Can we?
Sure. I, I think what I heard him say was, in lieu of providing a stub, he would provide an easement for a future sanitary sewer to pass through one of the, two of those lots.
Any other discussion, or anybody want to make a motion?
Do you want to go, staff recommendation?
Thank you.
I guess I don't see the point of the stub. I mean, it, it seems like the property to the south is going to be problematic anyway. It seems like we end up with more problems than, than not. So I, I guess personally, I don't see the point in the stub, which is the only change to staff recommendation that is in question, right?
So I would deny staff, or, and then come back and say, not include the stub, but an easement.
Or you could just say
Yeah.
The commission recommends approval of the plat as proposed?
Okay.
With the easement?
With the easement versus stub.
Okay. That's the motion. All in favor, raise your right hand. I think that's everybody, right? Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to item number 10. A request from Ryan Resorts LLC for review and approval of a public hearing site plan Broadway Beach House for a property located at 5100 Hubbell Avenue for the following type-two design alternatives. Allow a surface parking lot in a front yard when surface parking areas are only allowed in rear or limited side yards. Allow an accessory structure in a front yard when accessory structures are only permitted inside or rear yards, and allow a trash enclosure in a street-side yard when trash enclosures are required to be situated in rear yards. And Nick Tarpey from staff will present.
Cool, thanks. Madam Chair, members of the commission, Nick Tarpey, planning staff.
Cool. Thanks. Madam Chair, members of the commission, Nick Tarpey, planning staff. Something I do just want to start off again with this item. Specifically, we're just reviewing design alternatives for the site design, some of the layout, things like that, accessory structures. We're not talking about the use at all, so I'll touch on that a little bit. The use was approved at the zoning board of adjustment back in January, so that is not something that we are litigating here tonight. So here's aerial of the site. Area highlighted in orange is the site. You can see it's an existing building. As part of this project, the applicant, they're not proposing to do any building additions. They're literally keeping the existing building, doing some site modifications, and adding an accessory structure. The site's about a quarter mile to the southeast, or southwest, excuse me, of the US-65 Hubbell Ave interchange. And really, we're just situated just northwest of that Hubbell and Broadway corner. So two, a couple of major thoroughfares here in the city. And if you've been up in this area recently, there's an infrastructure project going on right now on East Broadway. So we'll come back to that a little bit tonight, but just some context for you, just to try to remember that. And really generally, if people are familiar with this area, it's a relatively high-traffic area. Zoning-wise, it has a lot of mixed-use zoning designations, particularly on the corridor, a lot of mixed-use, commercial uses, kind of legacy industrial uses. And as you step off the corridor, there's some undeveloped parcels and some larger one-household residential lots. So here's a photo of the site. This was taken yesterday. So this is from the west looking to the east on that frontage road. So this here is the intersection. So this is Hubbell and Broadway right here. This is the existing building, really as part of the improvements here. They're doing some window swap-outs, throwing some paint on it, things like that, and then doing some site improvements. There's really not a ton of alterations to the existing building. I'll let the applicant speak to that if they'd like. And then here's just an opposite view. So this is from Hubbell Avenue looking towards the southwest. You can see the existing building here. We got the corner here. We got this frontage road that wraps around. So here's the schematic of the site. We'll come back to some of the particulars, but I think this shows what's proposed in a pretty good 3D rendering. So there's a pool area that's proposed out front here. The existing hotel or motel use, basically, they would remodel the inside and they basically turn them into these like day-use cabanas. This is basically what they would be. And then there would be seating areas, patio areas, as well as hospitality space here, right in the middle. They're also proposing an accessory structure. So this item right here, we'll dive a little bit more deeper into that, but it's really proposed in the southwest corner of the fenced-in pool area. Really, the purpose of the accessory structure is to basically act as a storage area, store some of the mechanical equipment for the pool, the chemicals, the gauges, the things like that that are really technically important to the sanity and the operation of the pool. This area right here, that's highlighted with my cursor, is the new parking area that would be proposed to the southwest of the existing building. The current parking area right now is really right in front of the building. That would be scraped and that's where the pool would go. So here's existing conditions at the site, showing some demolition. You can see, as you saw in the aerial, this is how the site looks now. And all this pavement pretty much would be scraped. Here's a grading plan, kind of shows some utilities, showing the new parking area. So just a wider level view here, directly to the southwest of the building with the pool. Showing some landscaping along with that, just so you have an idea of conceptually what kind of landscaping would be required. Here's where the trash enclosure would go. So I know that was one of the items on the design alternative relief, really situated here at the southeast corner of the building, with the accessory structure for the poolhouse right here. Some floor plans, we can come back to those, not necessarily pertinent to the design alternative requests, some elevations. Here is the poolhouse. So I'll zoom in a little bit. This was in your packet, so you might have taken a look at it already. But here's a zoomed-in look at what's proposed here. This is basically a prefabricated building that the owner has selected and wants to place onto the site. So here's an image from the supplier's website of how it would look and how it would sit on the site. Here is an enlarged view of the pool plan, showing where the poolhouse would go, some utility hookups, and really just the adjacency of the poolhouse to the actual pool. So digging into the staff report here, I'll tackle those design alternative requests one by one. So with the surface parking, really, the building as it exists, it already has surface parking and a front yard. So the idea of them demoing and basically re-adding that surface parking in the front, it doesn't really change the functionality of how the building operates today. And then also, too, something else I wanted to mention about the parking is that generally, from what they've shown conceptually, is that they are landscaping it appropriately. They're providing the required buffers from the right-of-way. They've got the interior lot landscaping that they would be required to depict. There's only about 30 feet in that rear yard, and so it's really not enough space for them to construct a parking lot for their vehicular parking needs that they anticipate at the site. So as staff, we support that request for a variety of reasons. Digging into the next design alternative request, thinking about that accessory building. So really, like I said before, that building, it's got kind of a seasonal or a temporal nature. It's something that you buy prefabricated, you can place onto a site. It's not something that's really constructed, you know, onsite. They're basically shipping it there and basically providing footings and foundations at the site for it to be placed there and for it to be a little bit more permanent. And really, the only reason that they're doing that is that it's actually a building code requirement. So upon review of the initial building plans, our building department said, hey, can't just plop this building down here necessarily. It does have to come with footings and foundations because of the way it'll be used and occupied. So the building department is really requiring that more permanent nature. It's not really something that's proposed by the applicant. And really, with that more portable or that more seasonal nature of the structure, based on the information that we were provided, there are concerns about long-term durability with that, particularly with such a forward-facing, front-facing location of the structure. It's right in the front yard, and not even just in front of the building, but it is kind of extended towards that property line. So it's in a very high visible location. We were talking about the context a little bit earlier. And so staff, we try to consider all of those things, and we're thinking about a recommendation for that specific request. And then also, the last design alternative for the trash enclosure, thinking about that in a pretty similar fashion. We understand that the site is linear. It's got a difficult geometry. They are a little bit limited with the existing building that's there. And so maybe placing a trash enclosure directly behind the building isn't necessarily the most feasible thing. It's, you know, they may not be able to construct a paved access to it, or that may not really be financially practical. But we do feel that there are other, more appropriate locations on the site than sticking it at the corner, even with the landscape buffer that they have proposed. As staff, we would be comfortable with them citing it on the interior side to the west of the property where that parking lot is. So it still technically wouldn't necessarily meet code, because per code, it is required to go in the rear yard. But it would be a less visible, less public location for that enclosure. And we feel like that would just be more appropriate, instead of sticking it at a pretty high visibility corner with a lot of traffic rolling through there. Especially with a use like this, during the summer months, we get a lot of users here that's going to be a heavily-used trash enclosure. And so, staff, we want to try to guard against that. So digging into the recommendation, as staff, we do recommend approval of the site plan, subject to A. We do recommend approval of the request for that parking area situated in that front yard. We do feel that's appropriate. But however, we are requesting or are recommending denial of the design alternative request for that accessory structure, that poolhouse, that outbuilding that we were talking about, that would be proposed to go in the front yard. And then also a denial, or recommending denial of the trash enclosure would be going on that southeast corner. As staff, we would recommend relief for that, but really, we'd recommend relief in a different sense, where they could cite it maybe in that northern portion of that parking lot or north of the parking area. We did want to frame that recommendation relatively loose. It's not a hard-and-fast recommendation, but really just kind of calling for it to be cited in that general vicinity on the west side of the building. We did get a lot of comments for this. So we did get a lot of emails. I will run through those. I'll zoom in. You guys can marinate on them. Once you're done reading them, just let me know and I'll move on. If you need to zoom in, just let me know. So if you've read this email, they did provide some photos, and I'll dive into those next. So these are some photos that I'll run through that were provided by the applicant, I believe on their own property.
Is this, yeah, that was my question. Is this on their property? Is it behind the property, the applicant's property? Where is it?
This is on the Creamy's property to the north. These are provided by Marilyn and Lowell Creamy.
So this, these, yeah, it's this parcel here. So it's, as you can see, we can go back to the other map, but it's a pretty long parcel. So they've got frontage here on East 46th, and then it extends all the way back. So they have a pretty large holding. But they took those photos on their own property. I believe it'd be back here, kind of more towards the house. That's my understanding.
So we don't know for sure if it's this property. It's just in general, they're concerned about the overall paving of...
Correct.
Surface in this area of town.
Correct.
They're not saying specifically this property has been causing them flooding issues.
That's my, we can go back to the letter.
Okay.
I think what, if I can paraphrase, and if somebody has a different interpretation interrupt me, but I think they're already experiencing some issues, and I think they're worried that future development would exacerbate that with more paving. That's my read on it.
Right. Thank you.
So I'll flip, keep flipping through the photos here. I believe this is on East 46th. So I believe this is looking south. Somebody rebut me if I'm incorrect on that. Okay, thanks. I'll just keep flowing through the letters here. So we did get a couple of, this is a representative from the training location that exists just to the northeast of this property. So IUOE Local 234 has their headquarters and training facility just to the northwest of here. So there's a couple of letters that are from representatives of that organization. So just having some questions about what was proposed. And then this one's a little bit more detailed, given some concerns.
I have a question, please. How is the drainage issue calculated with the swimming pool now and the surrounding concrete being in place? That's one question. And then the other question is, how much additional square footage will the new parking lot add to the already existing non-permeable surface?
So my understanding is that the swimming pool is considered an impervious surface. So I know it'll be filled with water, but it's got a concrete base. It's a disturbed area. And so that, for the purposes of the stormwater management analysis, and again, that's not something that I'm digging super deep into, but my understanding is that is an impervious area. And then, also my understanding with the site... Is that based on the amount of disturbed area that they were proposing. So they are proposing to disturb more than 10,000 square feet of the site, but less than 50% of the total site area. And so because of that, we kind of heard in the last presentation a little bit about some of those Iowa code stormwater management triggers. They do have to meet the water quality volume, as well as the channel protection volumes that are required for the Iowa stormwater ordinance. So that's, I guess, the crux of the kind of stormwater management that they have to provide with this new development. I don't know the exact square footage of the pavement of the new parking lot. I can get back to you and look into that. I don't know it off the top of my head.
Yes. Could you explain that in one more way, different way, please?
Sure. So under Iowa stormwater code, there are certain requirements for certain types of stormwater detention that applicants have to demonstrate when they do site development. This specific site, they are disturbing more than 10,000 square feet of total land area, but it's less than 50% of the site or the parcel. So because of that, the two things that they really have to keep in mind when they develop a stormwater management plan are they have to meet the water quality volume standards, as well as the channel protection discharge standards. So that's kind of what the last guy was talking about in terms of a slow release rates. And so making sure when we detain water, it's released at a rate that is slow enough where it doesn't overwhelm existing drainage patterns and surrounding properties. Basically, to try to keep the site as it is and kind of mitigate, you know, any new paving that's provided, so it's not exacerbated with any new site development. Does that help a little bit?
It does help. And so the second question is, how has the city calculated these numbers to come up with the recommendation that we see in front of us?
Are you talking specifically with the stormwater management plan?
I'm talking about the broad issue of water drainage.
And I think, so our, kind of like we talked about the last item, our engineering staff, they review the drainage and the stormwater management kind of on a site-by-site basis.
Do you want to go back to the site plan and show where the stormwater management's taking place?
Sure.
Because the same as the last item, the engineering staff has approved this plan and has determined that this would not increase any runoff onto the adjoining properties from what's happening today.
So this area that's highly above my cursor here, and it's kind of called out on the site, this would be the detention area on the site. And you can see here, they are proposing some basically stormwater infrastructure within the site to capture water, and then kind of generally detain it here, and then slowly filter it out.
And is that area determined by the additional paving that they have put on the site, or by the total paved area that is on the site?
My understanding would be the additional paving that they would be adding. The applicant also might be able to speak to it as well. I don't know if, we don't have a civil here tonight. But, okay, we don't have a civil here tonight, but the applicant could also speak on that as well.
I have a question on item B, the accessory structure. Would staff be okay with that if it was a different, more substantial building in the same place? Or is the placement a no-go for this?
I think as staff, we thought about it. We didn't want to get too prescriptive in our recommendation. I think we would want it to be situated closer to the building. So we don't want to, if Bert wants to interrupt me, that's fine. I don't think we want to be hard-and-fast with that. We would propose, you know, maybe a building addition or something more substantive kind of to the north. If we go back to the, I'll go back to the site plan here and just kind of show you. And the applicant can also kind of walk through, I guess, how the site will operate. But generally... So right here is kind of like the main entry point area. Here's where the accessory structure would be. As staff, something we thought about and have discussed internally is that maybe if, you know, something was shifted over here, you could combine it with this like check-in area. And that would, you could have a lot of functions here with an accessory building in the northern area of the site that would have a little bit less visibility from the public way. So I guess that's a really long answer, long way of answering your question. Potentially, yes, that's something we could consider. I do want to hop back to the comments, though. I just want to make sure we show all those before we get into more discussion. So more photos here. All right, that's the end of the photos. I don't know if people finished reading this one, so I'll hang on this one for a second.
Is the max occupancy a fire code issue?
Be like a building code element, yeah.
Okay.
That would be something that'd be reviewed as part of the building permit review, which they have already undertaken. So they're doing a concurrent review with us. They've submitted a site plan. That's what we're looking at tonight. They also have building permit drawings in that deals with occupancies and means of egress and stuff like that. So that's currently under review, but that's not under consideration tonight. This one's a little bit longer. It's multiple pages, so hang on.
Is there any way that you could sum it up just a little bit?
Generally...
I'm a slow reader.
You're good. My understanding is, I think they're concerned about, I think, one, not under debate tonight, they are a little bit concerned about the use. So I don't, that doesn't really make them feel comfortable as an adjacent property owner. I think as well, they're a little bit worried about light pollution and things like that. We already did have a discussion on lighting tonight. The applicant has submitted a photometric plan, and they do meet the foot candle setbacks and things like that. There's only two parking lot lights that are proposed. They'd be 20 feet in height. The foot candles wouldn't really even come close to touching the adjacent property lines. This down here, the applicant is talking about the, or the letter writer here is talking about the placement of these artificial palm trees that are proposed around the fence area. They would have lights, but staff, we would not approve anything that would exceed the foot candle requirements at property lines. And there were some similar concerns about drainage. Applicant proposed some solutions here potentially to some of the problems that they called out. And I, to summarize B and C here, I think they're just concerned about what I would call visual blight, as a rough paraphrase. So they generally are opposed to the request. And then this is a exhibit that they provided. They just, they wanted to highlight the, we've already done this, but they just wanted to highlight this is the property and then this is their property. And they wanted to highlight the adjacent residential properties that are in green. But that's it for the comments. Anybody have any other questions about the site or anything?
Okay. Thank you, Nick. Applicant? You have 10 minutes.
Tyler Vincent, 6505 Merle Hayrow, Johnston, Iowa.
What, what slide do you mean?
That was creepy. Just the site plan.
The one that shows the trash enclosure in that building better?
Yeah. Well, that, that one could work. That works, that works too. So as Nick has discussed so far this evening, the existing building is located towards the back of the property, so that originally off the bat took putting the pool in the back, putting it off to the side, like we couldn't make it work that way, so we had to put it in the front yard. And with that, we talked with our pool contractor, who's also our designer for all the mechanical systems along with the pool, and he recommended to keep the equipment as close to the pool as possible, so that way there's no chances of anyone breaking a line. It's all right there. It's easy to maintain for him when he come back, when he comes back and does yearly maintenance for Ryan and all of the different functions for that. And then going along with Ryan's vision for the property, so as we've said, all of the existing motel rooms have been turned into daytime cabanas that you rent out. You can spend it with friends, you have a private patio in the back, or you can then go out to the loungers, the chairs, everything, enjoy the pool, play some volleyball, or go out to the grass and play yard games. Just, just have fun. And with the pool equipment building needed, needed to be close to the pool just for the efficiency of the equipment, we moved it to that southwest corner so that way we would not block views of any of the cabanas out to that grassy space, so that way somebody is not, you know, in the cheap seats in the back. Like you paid for this nice room, you wanted to have a view of the pool, and now you're stuck linking at the pool building. Going into the pool building itself, we were told during our first submittal that we would have to submit for a separate building permit for that. So we've gotten all of the drawings for those pre-engineered metal, or wood buildings, and we plan on submitting that with our next submittal to the billing department to get their approval for the, for the building. We've added frost footings, like was discussed, so that way we can actually mount that to the property and it will not leave. Like that building will be a permanent structure and it will stay there in its entirety. And I, I understand Nick's concerns with it being in the front yard, given that it is a very prominent building right out by the street, but we've added street treatments, or, excuse me, street trees all the way along Frontage Road with various plantings. We have a six-foot metal fence that is being used both to keep non-paying patrons out while also kind of screening the pool area as well. And then on the inside of that fence, all the way around is karl forester grass, you know, the really high, flowy grass. So we have all of these elements to kind of screen what's happening within the patio space, which is also screening that building, thus not making it as prominent as an out, outbuilding in the front yard. Going along to the trash enclosure, just off to the right that we can't see. It is made out of the approved materials by the city that you would like to see for all enclosures. We've got it kind of tucked away off to the sides, that way it's not in view of any of the patrons at the facility. It's away from our main gate, so that way there's no cross of Ryan's patrons and the trash being taken out of the building. And we're also screening it with Spartan Jupiter, so that way, once those are fully grown, you won't see the building actually from the intersection of Hubble and Broadway.
Hello? Ryan Smithson, 5100 Hubble Avenue, in Des Moines. As far as the trash can located over on the east end of the building, the corner right there, for 25-plus years, there's been a dumpster there right next to that window. That's where the pad, the concrete pad is. That's where a dumpster's been maintained. I know in our variance committee meeting, there was concerns that they, they liked the Broadway motel that was there. They weren't really in for a change of this, so me personally, I'd be more into this being my neighbor than the Broadway motel. I ran it for a month and to say it was horrible would be an understatement. But with all the new city codes that we followed by, the dumpster's going to be completely concreted in. It's going to have steel metal gates around it. No matter where that dumpster is, you're not going to see the garbage. You're not going to see a dumpster. You're not going to see none of that. And the dumpster's been there for 25-plus years. My concern of the dumpster not being, I, I really wouldn't have a problem with the dumpster moving over on the west end at all. The only problem is the main part where the service lounge is in the middle, in the double, the middle of the property, the yellow part, in the back, there's a back building that goes out behind that. With that back building and the kitchen being in the back right side of that, all the flow for garbage needs to go to the west, or the east. So it makes more sense with the garbage can being originally where it was at, for all the garbage to flow that way. If I had the other garbage on the other end, the kitchen, the back buildings blocking the kitchen, it would have to go all the way around that bar area, back around through the patio, back up to the hotel rooms, which are not hotel rooms no more, they're cabanas. The place closes at nine at night. There is, a motel's not my dream. And then they would have to be carried all the way down past the double-decker into the right for garbage. Where the kitchen's located, where the grease traps are already engineered to go in, wherever things at, it really don't make sense with a garbage can. We've put in tons of bush and trees, shrubbery, everything to code that we've agreed on that. It's going to be completely covered with bushes around it as well. So the garbage is where I have an issue. If it has to move over there and it's a dill breaker, or we're trying to cut a dill back and forth and meet halfway, I have no problem meeting halfway. But would it be a pain for us? It would be bad. It'd be a pain for us. But we could move the garbage can, it's not the end of the world. As far as the building in front, this is no shed. This is no Menard shed that, you know, $199 metal shed that's going to be bent in a storm or something like that. This is a mobile building. I mean, it has, it's consistent with the property. It has a deck on it, look on it, it has windows in it, it has a metal roof on it. It's going to be painted the same color and blend with the hotel. 90% of the hotel is a one-level rooms, if you see. This is exact height of one level of the hotel. If we cut a little piece off the motel and moved it over there for the building, it would look like that. If we built something new on the land, it would look like that. It's built with wood and trusses and it's not a, it's not a shed. It's an actual building. But the builder of the pool wanted, we did one micro lamp. So it needs to turn over, the water needs to turn over every six minutes for clarity of the pool. We went the extra step. I think the law's only six we have to do. We put the extra 50 grand in to get the one micro lamps where the water turnover clarity is there. And that pool unit needs to be close to the pool to get that clarity. If you think with 300 people in a pool, you know, drinks going in a pool, I mean, I don't know if you had a private pool party at your house, but the pool don't look so hot the next day. And, you know, I hope they don't, but people do pee in the pool, you know, stuff like that happens. But that pool water needs to turn over every seven minutes. And we went the extra step and he's like, Ryan, you'll never kick yourself for putting that extra 50 grand in. It's above Adventureland, it's above everyone else they have. Go for the one micro lamp thing, turn over not the six, which I did. But the clarity of that water is super important and where that, where that is located is very important to the clarity of the water for the pool. So those are my two issues really, that it's not a shed. It's not going to deteriorate. It's on footings. It's built just like it'd be built there. It's built out of wood. It's, it's a building. It's a mobile building. It's by far a shed, so I don't think it's an ISO. And we're planting all the way around it as well. You won't see anything around it, so, very soon. So I think it would be the same color of the building, it's going to fit in with the landscape. It's by far not an ISO. The Broadway motel is an ISO. Nothing here will be an ISO. As far as the palm trees along the line he was talking about, they're like $10,000 each, big, still, strong palm trees. There's four lights on the palm trees. They're in the coconuts, they hang off the lights. They're a little light like this, it's all photometric plan. It's shot straight down in an area about 10 foot and it's just a nice design for, for the property, for the palm trees. But that building, we could move the garbage can, like I said, it's not the end of the world, but that building really needs to be close to the pool. Financially, it does. As far as clarity of the water, it's very important that that is next to the pool. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the commission have questions? Yes, Carol?
Hello, thank you. Just to answer some of the question, or if you could entertain some of the questions I think some of the writers had as well as me. I take it this, there's going to be a bar and there'll be like a DJ probably, kind of like a Las Vegas feel?
No, we're not having a DJ. We'll have recorded music.
Okay.
There won't be a DJ.
And is it adults only?
It's 21 and over. It opens at 10 o'clock during the day and it closes at 9 o'clock at night. The rooms are used as a cabana room. They're for cabanas, like you rent for air conditioning, places to have your purse and your stuff and all your stuff you lock up. You can order in for birthday parties, charcuterie boards, food to your room, just a nice home base. A lot of places like Adventureland, they have the same principle, but they have tents set up, and private tents, and you got your little tent and your wader for the tent area. This is just a step further with air conditioning.
Okay.
All this is a
How does the pricing work for someone that wants to come?
The price that works, you can come, it's $50 to get in the resort, but 25's back in credit. We do that so somebody just can't come in and hang out all day and not try to partake or, you know, be a problem. $50, 25 credit back. You don't have to get a cabana to have a, you don't have to have a room. That's if you wanted to upgrade or have a party or wanted to do something a little special, you can pay that and come in and get a lounge chair, which are free. But if you want to upgrade to day beds, which are outside around the pool, they're just a real wide cushion lounger, more comfortable lounger. They upgrade for that. But, yeah. They're just cabanas basically. The whole place closes at nine. I know they had a concern at the variance meeting about motel, which it was a motel, a filthy motel at that, and there was a lot of people staying all night there. I only kept two beds there because that's what the motel was. And I told him at the last meeting, I was like, I'd rather get rid of them too, but that's not my dream motel. I just, you know, it's had a motel license that was existed open, so I had them two rooms, but I took them out. I said, perfect, we don't have zero overnight rooms and it's not what I'm looking for. It's just I'm looking for an adult place for, when you go to Adventureland and play $70, at my age, we're not riding the roller coasters and we're not riding the kiddie rides and we don't want to pay for the rest of the park. But you don't want to be at the swim-up bar at Adventureland with kids jumping off it and, on a kid day. And that's my experience I had at Adventureland and that's why I'm opening this, to be honest with you.
Okay. On the not shed, is there a chance you could sex it up a little bit with, you said it's going to match the color scheme, but could you, it looks kind of like a shed. So if you could make it
Absolutely. I tell you, when we, when we do the roof and everything, the roof's dominant in that building. The roof's big and dominant. The roof's going to be hay and like sand and stuff on it to represent like a beach on the top and then the colors of the water are going down below. That's going to be done exactly to the shed. It'll be the same colors as the hotel. And it's the same height, but it will look like you cut a piece of that hotel off and just set it there. It will, it will conform with the rest of the, it's not going to just pop out like that. I think we're seeing a red shed, but inside there, it's, it's not a shed. It's two-by-fours, it's wood, it's trusses, it's not a shed, it's a
Okay, just one final question, yes or no? Will there be a man door on your trash enclosure?
A what?
A pedestrian door, a man door?
On my trash enclosure, we'll have double gate, steel gates
Uh-huh.
to open up and they open up double wide so the trash can come out from the trash can. But the door, the man door, there's an opening on the side and that's to put a single trash can through there.
For the person to go in and put it in the, okay, great.
That will also have a cover on it, yeah.
Thank you.
But it's, you won't, you won't see no garbage there. I mean, it's the person renting, you either rent a garbage place or you're not. I did not spend, you know, everything I own in my life to have a place looking like that, nor has any of my places looked like that in the past. The Broadway Hotel, on the other hand, was a whole nother deal. So you can only go up from Broadway motel.
Commissioners? Do commissioners have any other questions for the applicant? Seeing no one else in the audience for comment.
How much are the, the rooms?
The rooms are $200. And, but if you have, you can put up to eight people in them, so if eight people pay 50 at the gate, 25 of that you can pay back in there for credit on that. So you get 20, the $50 just so there's a minimal spend, so you don't just have enough to get in there and be a pain in the neck asking everybody for a drink. You know what I mean? So it's kind of something like that's got to have a little minimal spend. And $25 is not asking for a lot to spend at a place for the day. So you came with something. So, but like I said, the 25 bucks is credited back per person, so with eight people, you have $200 credit back already, if you got a group of eight. So basically you get it for what you paid to get in. But they're limited, there's only 10 of them rooms, you know, and the rest is just loungers and like anywhere else, so.
Any other questions for the applicant or for staff before, before I close the public hearing? Okay. Close the public hearing. Thank you.
No problem, thank you.
Open it up for commission for discussion and/or motions.
Can somebody flip it back to like the site plan so you can kind of see the holistic space? Thank you. Do you have any questions or, or not questions or items for discussion? Or are you just? Let me see it. So just as a reminder, the staff recommendation is to support A, recommend denial on B and on C, recommend denial, but is open to having the trash enclosure be at the northern portion of the parking area. No, it's, staff supports approval of A, recommends denial of B, recommends denial of C, but is open to having the trash enclosure be on the northern portion of the parking area. So the statute, the, the rule is that the trash enclosure be required to be situated in rear yards, but since the rear yard isn't really possible in this case, the staff would like it moved to the northern end, or western end, I'm sorry.
Yeah, north, north and west, yeah.
Northwest, okay.
Has there been, has the trash enclosure actually been, have we seen any indication the trash enclosure hasn't been there for 20 years at the place it is right now?
I believe it's been there as a dumpster. As part of this site plan, they have to bring the site into full compliance with current standards, so even if the trash enclosure has been there for 50 years without an enclosure structure, they would still have to provide a new structure that meets our current requirements.
I'm not posed with a structure, I guess I'm just sort of thinking, you have a, if you have a public facility, a whole lot of people and there is actually a flow to how the back of house works and we're actually requesting a change to back-of-house, that seems like it could get problematic and we end up with more problems than we solve, especially if we have an enclosure that meets our priorities. Is there any indication that the statements they've made with respect to how operations work is not correct?
I guess, I don't have anything to refute what they said. I do think that the kitchen there is in the middle of the building, so from my untrained eye, I would think it'd be the same distance to go to the west as it would be to the east, but...
I just mean, oh, sorry, I thought the argument was that there isn't actually a path along the back of the building that goes to the west versus the east, and so instead you'd have to go through the pool deck with garbage to get to the west. But I don't know, maybe I didn't misunderstood that.
Do we have any, do we have any, either aerial or photographic images of the rear?
Because if you are going through the pool deck with garbage, that seems like we're not helping anything.
Did you, you said you wanted to see an aerial?
Just, yeah, to sort of...
Okay.
Give some sort of visual to the rear of the building.
There's another building that goes out the device that's at the front. But that being said, the kitchen's on the east end of that part, so you would have to go all over the room to bring in the rest of the area. There's another building behind that building, which blocks the travel.
Right.
It's a plus behind the building.
If we think that we can screen the enclosure, I guess I'd be leaning towards not messing with back-of-house operations that are going to end up with a safety issue if you're putting, carrying stuff through a pool deck. But again, I, I don't know. I'm only seeing this picture and hearing what he's stating. If I'm believing him, it does look like it's more difficult to go west than it does east, even though I understand that distance isn't different. Oh, I'm sorry, this is about, this is about C, isn't it? The trash enclosure?
Yep.
Yeah, A is the parking, to keep it where it's proposed. B is to keep the shed where it's proposed, and C is to keep the dumpster where it's
We've heard quite a bit of concern on the east side this evening about water and water drainage, and so we know that it's a real problem. It's a very, you know, it's, the topography is irregular, and it's lovely because of that. My question is, we've heard concerns from neighbors about this very issue. What relief do they have if the drainage plan in this proposal does not work? What relief can they, are, will they be able to obtain, if any?
I mean, I think there'd be something, you know, it'd be with our zoning enforcement staff, we would work with them, and if there were consistent complaints, if some of the stormwater management facilities weren't maybe installed or constructed accurately, that's something that we could investigate and send city inspectors out there to do that. That would be my first hunch for that.
It could be considered a nuisance, the city could take action through a nuisance process. Or, I know the neighbors wouldn't want to hear this, but we'd also leave it up to them that they could, you know, file a lawsuit in court that, you know, between two private property owners that one's inflicting damage on the other.
I guess I would just add that I don't know if I have any heartburn about the dumpster enclosure location, if they're screening it properly, but that accessory pool structure gives me a bit of heartburn, I share Carol's concerns, so. And I understand the adjacency to the pool is important, and the further you get away, the more costs you add, so I would like to see it pushed north, more towards the building, and screened with some landscaping. It's just not very attractive for, right next to the street, in my opinion.
So is it just the picture that the architect has provided? Because what I'm hearing from him is that while the architect drew it with the red building, he said it's going to match exactly what the color of the hotel is, or the cabana house.
Yeah, the, the drawings provided have a picture, and the paint color was scarlet red, so I, you know, going off of that as the official submittal, I, I don't know if I can fully trust that it would be something that's an improvement upon that image, but just my opinion.
Can you show the landscape plan again, so we can see what kind of landscaping would be put around that?
And my, my interpretation too is that it's urethane siding. Is that accurate? Okay, just wanted to say that as well.
Is having staff have final say over the external view of that shed something that's possible? Because I, again, it's, it seems like the other statement made was, was the location of it is dictated by health and safety. Because that's where, I don't know if that's accurate, but if it is health and safety and there is, there is an issue in the run between the cleaning materials and the pool, with a relatively large pool, I don't think I'd want to be approving a germ pond.
Another option would be to say that this shed can't be any closer to the south property line than the existing building, so that would...
It would have to be from here to here, because here's the front of the building. Maybe, yeah, maybe 40 or 50 feet north, I don't know what the actual dimension is, maybe not even that far.
I mean, I do feel like if you rent one of those cabanas for a couple hundred dollars, having a shed right in front of you is a bit of a deterrent. I guess what I would prefer to see, and people can disagree with me, is just more screening, more landscape screening around that, you know, building, at that location. Do you have your mic on, Justin?
Oh, sorry. It's definitely, no, I was saying that there is some, some ornamental grasses that go up eight to 10 foot tall that could hide that, and then if he's, as, if he is doing any of the palm tree layering on the roofing, it would go very well with it and, and make it a little more sexier.
I would support the screening, because I mean, if we move, if we move the shed, you're talking about eliminating what, like eight, you know, an eighth of the actual rentable structure, sort of negatively impacting the prof, you know, negatively impacting the viability of this, and shifting it again too far seems like, if I'm understanding correctly, a health and safety issue, not a, not just a, you know, we're moving a piece of equipment that's needed to make sure people are not sitting in filthy water, yeah.
And the second note, now that I'm thinking, it would remove that green space too to utilize bat mitten or whatever people want to do, bags or whatever people play nowadays, so, I would vote to keep it there, but just with some really serious landscaping to add to
Anybody want to make a motion?
Crack at it, I guess.
Go for it, Justin.
Um, here we go. So I, is it I move to staff? I make a motion to, I don't know if I can do aesthetics, but leave the shed where it's at with...
Do you want to start with A?
Yeah. Yeah, leave parking where it is, A. B, uh, is that the shed?
Yes.
Approve the shed so long as there's some significant landscaping to shield and cover the building.
Would we say with landscaping to the planning director's satisfaction?
And the building ties in to the original design of the main building, correct? Okay. And then C, are we denying that yet? Or approving? Oh, yeah, and leave C alone, approve it. Boom, do I have a, no, wait, that's you.
Set. Is that all kosher?
Yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. That is the motion. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Any passes, or did we catch it all? All right, thank you. Are there any committee or directors reports? Nope, all right. Being adjourned.